Start the meeting. Thank you all for joining us. The first item on our agenda is administrative business. There's a calendar which is up on the board. Are there any additions to the calendar? Okay. And the second item is the past record of the November 1st school committee meeting. I don't think I was there on this date, so somebody who was there needs to move it. This is the Capitol. This one wasn't on. You weren't there either. Well, we might not have a... Can we vote it, Robin? If we don't have a quorum of... We have a quorum here, but not a quorum of people who are at that meeting? Hmm? I think we're gonna have to wait till...
Let's table it.
We have to table it because Barbara's...
It was Rebecca, Barbara, and Michael.
And Barbara's out of town.
Okay, but in Helen and me. So let's table it.
Right. Isn't Barbara in New Hampshire? Barbara's in New Hampshire, and so we're not gonna get five anyway. Okay, so we're gonna table the consent agenda. Good. So we've just gotten five minutes back. Subcommittee liaison reports. And we do have a full house, so let's move through these as expediently as possible. Ms. Ram.
Nothing new to report. We have a meeting on Tuesday of next week where we will discuss the year-end report, the first quarter report, and financial projections.
Any questions? Okay. Capitol, which one?
Very briefly, I attended the building commission meeting this week and listened to the monthly report from the architects and construction managers for the devotion school project, which is on time and on budget, which is great news. And last night I joined Todd Crane and the Baldwin, the Baldwin community or the Woodland Road community and learned interesting things about a couple of traffic mitigation projects that are underway there, but I will report a little more on that when we get to the Baldwin School Project section of tonight's meeting.
Good. Thank you for being efficient. Next meeting?
Capitol Subcommittee is a week from tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning, somewhere in Town Hall, 8:30 to 10:00 on Friday, the 18th.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Questions, Capitol? All right. Curriculum. Ms. Otto isn't here. Is there a curriculum update?
Yes, we're gonna talk about it later. The MCAS results, I think we went over that, and right now, I'm blanking. I'm sorry, I wasn't...
We did the ed plan?
The ed plan for the high school.
We did the high school ed plan.
Both of which will be discussed a little bit later.
Later in the agenda. Good. We are moving through efficiently.
And there is another meeting scheduled for...
November 17.
November 17.
Great. Okay. Government relations. Ms. Stone.
It's gonna really suck you weak in government.
All right.
Your microphone's gonna probably just go off. So nothing to report.
Yes. Well, there was an election earlier this week. Okay. Policy... Any questions? Okay. Policy review. Dr. Jackson.
Okay. So policy met yesterday and discussed two policies that you have in your packet that are up for first reading. If Sam Zimmerman is anywhere in the room, it'd be great if you guys could let him come to the podium.
Mr. Zimmerman, are you here?
Sam? All right. Well, that's okay. We'll keep going. So the first one, both of these policies are required and necessary. The first one on naloxone is connected to opioid use and was recently asked for by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to make sure that we were prepared to administer naloxone in the case we needed to. The primary pieces of this policy have to do with training the appropriate staff to do so, with maintaining it on the property, and making sure that it's connected with other health services and emergency service activities. So open to questions. It is a first reading. We'll take back comments. It has been publicly posted. We've not gotten any feedback as of yet. And... Oh, there's Sam. And our head of nursing played a key role in developing this policy, so they've been involved from the beginning. Sam, would you like to add anything to that quick summary?
Which one would you like to start off with?
We're doing naloxone in our hands.
Okay.
Questions or concerns or things you'd like the Subcommittee to take back and consider? We won't be meeting again until December 14th, so if in the interim there are questions, feel free to let us know about that one.
And this will go up... It was the first reading, so it goes up on the website for public comment?
It's been up for public comment already, because we did some edits from the last meeting, so we went ahead and put it up for public comment, but we can still take comments or questions as we'll be back hopefully late, mid-December. Okay. The second one that's in front of you is a hazing policy. We were alerted back in the spring that we did not have a hazing policy and that we needed one separate from the bullying policy, but integrated and connected to our discipline policy and other related policies. So Sam, why don't I let you talk to this one?
Yep. So if I can interject on regarding this one. Notice came out from the Commissioner at the end of May reminding all school districts that even though they have an existing discipline policy and it might mention hazing, all school districts in the Commonwealth must have a separate hazing policy that is communicated and enforced with all, to all school organizations that have a substantial number of membership, and that all employees upon hiring must also be notified of their responsibility to report hazing. And so this one also has a deadline of November 1st. So we are a little bit, and I've already spoken to Desi, and it said that we are in fact in draft and review, and they've also, they've given us a December 1st extension. Okay? And so you have the finalized policy of hazing. If there's any questions, please let me know.
So this is our first read. When's our second reading?
No, this one is also folded into it, yeah. Right.
I just, I learned that yesterday, last night.
So technically, our second reading would be December, at our next school committee meeting.
Right. Which is December 1st. Would the department accept by the time everyone's head hits the pillow December 1st, or does it need to be 5:00 PM?
Yes. In my conversation with the Commissioner's office yesterday about a couple of our policies, it's closed to business on the 2nd. But that's a Friday.
Oh, excellent. Terrific.
Yep.
I know there's also just a lot of interest, in particular, in, you know, hazing. And so I think, I think there's a lot of interest in hazing. And so, excuse me, we're in the middle of a meeting, please. And so I think that...
Want to be heard! Want to be heard! All educators!
And so I think it's important that the public understand that there's a hazing policy that we're considering, since that is a common... Excuse me, this isn't respectful. We're talking about hazing. We are talking about hazing. Seriously?
Hailing, marrying, settling contracts. All educators! All educators!
Hazing is a very important topic in our town. It's very important to our students.
Want to be heard! Want to be heard! I'm gonna be heard, I'm gonna be heard.
And so I think on this one, it's especially important that we...
How long can you stay tonight, Susan?
That we make sure, that we make sure that all of the people in town understand that this is one of the things we're considering.
What do we want? All contracts! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! Public comment 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 now! How long must we wait? 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 How long must we wait?
Okay.
How long must we wait? How long must we wait?
We can't move until people are quiet.
We could move if you do this work and then everything else after. If you remove public comment, we will take it down.
Okay. Is there anything else on the policy review? Are there any questions for the head of policy review? All right. Additional liaisons and updates. Negotiations.
We marginalize public comment now. Public comment now! Public comment now! Public comment now!
Folks, we're about to get an update from the chair of the negotiations Subcommittee, which might be of interest to some people.
Public comment now! Public comment now!
Ladies and gentlemen...
Public comment now! Public comment now!
May I have your attention, please?
Public comment now! Public comment now! Public comment now! Public comment now!
I believe the people in this room would like to hear about negotiations, which is what I'm about to get up and talk about. So in the interests of serving to answer some of the questions that you may have raised in your public comment that we would not normally respond to... Excuse me?
We haven't raised any questions yet because we're not allowed to speak.
So before public comment, just in case some of the questions that you have might be answered with an update on negotiations...
We're gonna have a new session. Your update.
Hmm?
We're good. We need a... I'd like to hear the update.
Oh, my God.
I have a parent in the video. I'd really like to hear the update.
Are we plugged in?
Yeah.
Is that on?
Yep.
And how do I advance slides? How do I advance slides?
Yep.
While they're getting this ready, just so the school committee is aware, at the EDCO meeting today, they announced that it's the 50th anniversary of Metco. I believe, by the way, that public comment is right after this. Is that not right? Is there more? I'm very... Sorry. As soon as you're ready, just let me know. But it's the 50th anniversary of Metco, which Brookline was one of the founders of, and there's a brunch in Quincy on December... I just had it here. I think it's the 11th, a jazz brunch. So just so that people are aware of that. You're welcome.
When you're ready, we'll turn it on.
Okay. All right. Madam Chair? I don't know whether this picks up when it's farther away. Yeah, it's too bad. Members of the school committee, members of the BEU and audience, I am deeply disappointed to have to give this update tonight, coming on the heels of what many of us consider a devastating presidential election outcome this week. I had hoped to be able to report that the BEU had finally scheduled a ratification vote on the Unit A agreement that was reached more than six weeks ago, and that this committee approved on October 6th, but also that after three long mediation sessions, the most recent last night, that we might also have had an agreement to boost wages for our classroom and special education paraprofessionals, so that we can move strongly towards solving the core issue of becoming competitive with our neighboring districts for this critical group of staff. I regret very much that that is not the case. Last night, after our third exchange of proposals through our mediator on the paraprofessional contract, the mediator declared that she could not bring the two sides to agreement and that we were at impasse. That ends mediation and initiates the next stage of negotiations called fact-finding, about which I'm happy to answer questions from the committee. The community is understandably confused about why, after so long and after reaching agreement with teachers on the critical issues they had raised of preparation time, wages, and teacher voice in educational decision-making, that we seem to be so far from bringing this too-long negotiation to a conclusion. I am confused as well, especially about why, with hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table for paraprofessionals, proposals that go beyond the increases already agreed to for teachers, with key issues of competitiveness of wages addressed, the BEU leadership has consistently chosen needlessly to delay and draw out these negotiations... ...with budget-busting demands that serve neither, that serve neither her members nor the students of Brookline. When BEU leadership repeatedly counters our proposals with wage proposals dramatically outside the bounds of the budget dollars we received from the 2015 override, the school committee has no choice but to say no. There is no pot of gold on the mysterious seventh floor of Town Hall. We do not have slush funds. We have the voters, we have the budget dollars that the voters have entrusted to us, and we are trying very hard to allocate those fairly and well to address the real issues in the teacher contract, the para-contract, and the Unit B contract. The BEU president seems to think that if she says no enough times and calls us enough names, we will promise to spend dollars that we do not...
No!
That we do not have and will not have. And that we will do so while accepting the BEU's rejection of almost every proposal from the school committee side that we have made to move the system, that we have made to move the system toward more efficient, more responsive, and more reliable service for our children. I know that the BEU president has told her members and the public that we are locked in a battle for decent wages, that the school committee is intransigent in its determination to strangle its staff and deny them humane working wages and conditions, that we, that we won't even consider an annualized salary for paras of $20,000, and although there is, and although there is not an ounce of truth in those statements...
No!
Don't scapegoat the president. We're with you 100 percent.
Yeah!
Don't scapegoat.
The public is welcome to believe what it likes, but I am dispirited by it when I know what has actually been offered and to date rejected by the BEU on behalf of its hard-working members. The school committee came into these negotiations with a stated objective of raising wages for classroom paraprofessionals and especially those in our special education programs. We heard from the teachers and the paraprofessionals, as well as from our superintendent and staff, that some of our specialized programs were at risk because we were not able to recruit or retain the paraprofessionals we needed. We need no convincing that this is a priority and have since last January presented proposals that, while working within the bounds of our budget realities, take strong steps towards addressing this core issue. Indeed, we began that process with the one-year para-agreement in 2014, when paras received a 3% across-the-board increase to the other units' 2% increases. We have continued in these negotiations to build as many budget dollars into the para-contract as possible, especially in areas where they will do the most to improve our competitive standing with peer districts and help us keep those paras here with our kids. But since a battle of words does not get us anywhere except additional call-outs from the audience and skepticism on both sides... I would like to show the committee and the community, I would like to show the committee and the community the kind of proposal I am talking about, that the BEU has rejected. Ben?
A lot of money on city floor that's been...
This is good. All just passed by.
Maybe you should come visit. It's been a while.
10 more hours.
Yeah!
Come on in.
We're gonna tell them that we're school.
Beautiful.
I'm gonna go for a day.
That's right.
Yeah.
Work is a paraprogram.
Oh, yeah! Try to eat on my salary. If you spend, you'll die.
Stand united.
Right.
Stand united.
Oops.
Can we make it further?
Yeah.
So this is the current salary schedule for the vast majority of our paras who are in what we call Schedule 2. Will you please let me explain this?
Public comment now! Public comment now! Public comment now! Public comment now!
This is the current salary. This...
$13,000 because it's spread out throughout the school year. See, don't get $10,000 and not...
Yup! 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 Yes! Yes! Yup!
I make $6,000, $200 every two weeks. Can you live off that?
No!
I work two other jobs. I'm a veteran. I'm in the military. Along with it.
All right. So folks, 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 we are not gonna get through anything this way. We really don't. But, okay, but, folks, can I... I'm not yet... You're not letting me speak. Okay. So hold on one second. Hold on one second. First of all, I am hoping that everyone in this room who cares about children also cares to model respectful behavior. Every single person, us included, us included.
We've been waiting for two years for respect.
The school committee and everyone else in this room, I would hope, can model respectful behavior for our children who are in this room and who, I assume, are watching this on TV with their parents. And so I think one thing that's helpful and not hurtful in public dialogue is to let people finish their sentences without shouting them down in the middle. So Rebecca is in the middle of giving us a presentation on the status of negotiations. After that, people will have a chance to make their statements on negotiations. While you are making your statements, we will not shout you down. Please, can we just get through this?
The vast majority of our paras are in what we call Schedule 2. Unlike Newton, Lexington, Needham, and many others, Brookline has not to date had a different schedule for paras who work one-to-one with a student in a classroom, as opposed to paras who staff our high-need substantially separate programs such as RISE. A classroom para under today's contract is paid for 6.33 hours, the student and teacher day, and if that para has one year of experience, is paid for 189 days, and without one year of experience would be paid for 183 days. That's 180 student days, three teacher workdays, and then if you've had a year of experience coming in as a para, you are also paid for six vacation days. There is no secret to the fact that our currently hourly wages are not as high as our competitors, such as Newton. Here's what that looks like right now.
Folks, please, please, we will not interrupt you during public comment. Please let her finish. Please? Can you please let her finish her sentence? Please?
To address the...
Everyone is welcome to fact-check when it is their turn. Can we please model that? Do we not have... One second. Do we not have enough disrespectful dialogue in this country right now? Seriously? We do not have a respectful...
I have nothing to do with this.
Right. And part of the...
When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? All contracts!
All contracts!
How long do we wait? How long do we wait? How long must 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 we wait?[1578.12]
Alright, so first of all, one second, Ms. Stone. We have our students who are here for the MASs Certificates of Academic Excellence. That's supposed to start at 6:40. So, when your statement is over, we're going to go to that, and if there are anything else, we will go to it after that.
To address the difference in our current hourly wages, our proposal to the BEU was to add 40 cents per hour to all steps on the Salary Schedule II. Will you let me finish, people? To retroactive, retroactive to last year, then to add 2% each year for this year and two more years beyond to all steps in Schedule II. In addition, to boost first-year salaries even more, we proposed eliminating Step One entirely so everyone starting this year would come in at what is now Step Two. We have also proposed and budgeted for paras to work a standard seven-hour day, giving them work time before and after students arrive to prepare, work with teachers, or help supervise arrival and dismissal as needed. We have proposed a new time management system that will better schedule their time and have them account for it so that they can be paid for actual time worked. If we assume that paras are paid for seven hours a day rather than 6.33, their annualized salary goes up dramatically, as you can see here. In the case of a first-year, in the case of a first-year para, Step One, full-time, with a bachelor's degree, which most of our paras have, hired in the current school year, that para was hired at 16.43 per hour, $16.43 an hour, because we have not yet settled a contract. If the BEU accepted the offer most recently on the table, that same para hired this year would immediately increase their salary wage to $17.74 an hour, actually higher than the equivalent entry salary in Newton. But that doesn't get at the larger problem, and you can see that up on the board. That does not get at the larger problem that we have, which is the much larger differential between what we offer to our paras in specialized programs versus what they can make elsewhere. While other districts addressed this with different salary schedules, the BEU rejected our offer to restructure ours in that way, so we have offered a different structure that puts us on the road to competitiveness without splitting schedules. We offer a differential payment to those paras assigned to these special programs instead. That additional hourly boost would begin next fall at a dollar an hour extra, increasing to a dollar twenty-five additional the year after. Here's what that looks like in practice and in comparison to Newton. So, if you look at, if the last BSC offer is implemented, sorry, if you look down at the second part, so in the beginning is where we are, and if the, if the school, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on to the additional payment. I beg your pardon. So... What you're, what you're seeing is the actual schedule. The first column that you're looking at, for non, for people without a BA and for people with a BA, those are the two, on top and on bottom. The first column is where we are currently. The second column is where we would be this year with implementation of this contract. The third column, sorry, the second column is what we would retroactively do and would boost last year. The third column with the blue arrow is this year. And so, if you look at, if you look at this, what you're seeing is the 40% for last year, 40 cents for last year, an additional 2%, the dropping of, dropping of Step One. And that brings us there. So, I'm sorry, one, those are steps. There's, the para, the para Schedule II has eight steps. We are proposing also in 2017, the beginning of next year, that we add a Step Nine, which is how you address the people who are with Brookline and with Brookline kids for a long time, which we are also proposing to do. So, if you look at the top, the differential, sorry, the differential for special program and training starts in September 2017 at a dollar an hour additional, you just have to do that math in your head, and the dollar twenty-five on 9-1. I do not have the whole scale. So, you see the current problem and just how far our proposal would get us. Does it get us all the way? No, we do not have the budget for that. But if you- But if you combine our hourly wages with the substantial health benefits in Brookline, which is 83% of premiums, versus Newton's 70% and other districts 77 to 75%, the hourly wage in Brookline starts being a better relative deal, given what it leaves in our staff's pockets at the end of the month. It makes us much, much more competitive, and we will continue to try to address these issues in future contracts. On top of these offers that move the district leaps and bounds forward on these priorities, BEU leaders have also unfortunately not scheduled a vote on the teachers' agreement settled in September. Not only is such a delay a violation of the laws of good-faith bargaining, far more important is that failing to vote that agreement prevents our hard-working teachers from receiving thousands of dollars in back wages that are due to them, that are due to them as soon as they ratify the Unit A agreement. And it prevents the district- And it prevents the district, and it prevents the district from moving forward with plans for professional development, curricular planning with the new Joint Workload Committee, and more. Because the BEU has instead threatened not to take such a vote until all other contracts are signed, the school committee, the school committee today filed a formal complaint with the Department of Labor Relations, charging the BEU with violating their obligations under good-faith bargaining. The teachers, paras, and most of all, the children of the public schools of Brookline deserve better than this, from the BE, from the BEU leadership. We have had, we have had a terrific, positive start to this school year. Settling these contracts, settling these contracts and delivering these improved salaries, benefits, schedules, and other contract elements that will improve the quality of our work environment should be the priority. Thank you for your time, and thanks especially to the team in negotiations and for the community for bearing with us during this process. We meet again with the BEU and the mediator on November 22nd to see if we can have better luck with Unit B.
Okay, that was our liaison report. Questions for Ms. Stone?
Explain once more the process, once, if the mediator has left us, what happens now?
Unfortunately, the mediator hasn't left us. The mediator has just turned attention to the Unit B contract. In filing for, in filing at impasse and moving us to fact-finding, the process for fact-finding essentially takes it out of the context of a negotiation where you're exchanging proposals. There is a, the Department of Labor Relations will issue a list of fact-finders. Each side looks at the list, eliminates some, chooses others, the DLR appoints a fact-finder, and then there is a hearing. It usually takes a full day with representatives of the school committee, that's usually council and the MTA and BEU, and they present findings of fact on the bargaining to date. But anything bargained in mediation is off the table for fact-finding. Fact-finding is only concerned with the proposals that went up to mediation, although the sides are welcome to negotiate if they choose to. That process, I understand from our council, will probably not begin until January, possibly even February, depending on the Department of Labor Relations.
So, so, given that the contract for paraprofessionals has gone to fact-finding, is there anything that can be done or that we can be doing between now and then, or are we basically waiting, I mean, besides what you just said, which is picking, you know, or are we basically waiting for the fact-finding process?
We are waiting for the fact-finding process unless there is, I don't know, we are waiting for the fact-finding process. There is, there is nothing further scheduled for the two negotiating committees because we have moved to fact-finding.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for that. I don't know if there are other liaison reports, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to move to the student recognition because our students are here. If they're a student, are they in the, where are they? Who do they know they are? If we can make a path for them to get through. So I do respect the fact that you're all here. I also want to say that this agenda with public comment at 7:45 has been out, someone just asked me this, has been out since the beginning of the week. So I'm glad you're all here, but this timeline has been out for a number of days, and we have people who are each at sort of various points of view, coming, points in time, coming in and out. So, if you could make a, some sort of pathway for the students. Okay, are they here? Oh, they're not. Are they here? Oh, they're, oh, they're coming in the back. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm very sorry, they're coming in the back. They couldn't quite get through. Okay, so, I, I would respectfully ask, this is being televised and the television sort of gets right there, so if somehow our students could be on TV, that would be really terrific, and then everyone can move back, if that's okay? Yeah, it's, it's, right, it's the podium that's televised and right in front of the podium, so, I just want to make sure, can we move our students out to the front of the podium? Thanks very much, everybody. That's what's being televised, is the podium. Right, next to or behind, or, next to or behind around the podium so that they can be on TV, because the TV doesn't always pick up back here. Thank you so much.
So, each year, two students, two Brookline High School students are selected to receive the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Certificates of Academic Excellence. These awards are given to high school students who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. The students selected exemplify the hard work, determination, perseverance, and academic excellence we value in Brookline. We are proud of their accomplishments and are honored to have them represent Brookline. I would like to invite Dean Bouchard, who is at the podium, to introduce our first recipient.
Thank you, Dr. Bott. Thank you, everybody. Nice to see everybody. I'm here to introduce first Bailey Dwyer. Her guidance counselor Cathy Whalen couldn't be here this evening, and she sends her love, of course, and support, and I'm going to read Cathy's words about Bailey. Bailey Dwyer stands out as an inspiration and one of the most persevering, committed, and hard-working students with whom I have worked. A member of the National Honor Society, she has excelled in rigorous schedules of advanced-level classes throughout high school, continually giving 100% of herself and producing outstanding results. She has done so despite the challenges posed by epilepsy. Bailey was diagnosed with epilepsy and underwent two major brain surgeries before entering high school. The last surgery was in January of her eighth grade year. The surgeries were successful in that Bailey became free of clinical seizures as long as she takes medication. The medications she must take are essentially neurodepressants designed to slow the brain down, which leaves Bailey much more tired than her same-age peers. Because her brain is being slowed down by medications, she must exert more effort to learn and process new information than she otherwise would. Bailey does this without complaint and without ever feeling sorry for herself. She simply works harder and longer. When faced with something difficult, she doesn't give up. She meets with her teachers and figures out what strategies will work for her to succeed. Bailey's family moved to Boston from Canada so that she could get treatment at Boston's Children's Hospital. As a result of the time she spent at the hospital as a patient, Bailey developed a strong desire to make the hospital states of other children more enjoyable. She has been on the Teen Advisory Committee at Children's Hospital since her freshman year. In this role, she works with other teens to help doctors and administrators understand the patient experience and the challenges faced by hospitalized children and their families. Bailey also volunteers in capacities that allow her to direct, that allow her to have direct contact with young patients so she can try to brighten their days. Bailey's personal experience also led to her participation in a TEDx talk last year where she co-presented a talk on epilepsy. Bailey spoke to a large audience, encouraging them to remove stigmas around epilepsy, and shared her experience and feelings about it. Although Bailey feels more exhausted than her peers, but doesn't look so tonight, she has very busy and full school days. She began taking our school restaurant course in Grade 10, a class where students run a full-service restaurant in the school, and fell in love with that. She opted to take two periods of restaurant classes in Grades 10 and 11. One of the classes met before school, which meant that Bailey came to school at least an hour early every day. The teachers reported that Bailey became a leader of the restaurant staff and as a, as a frequent customer of the restaurant. Ms. Whalen saw that, too. Bailey's leadership ability is also evidenced on the softball field. She has played for the school's team since Grade 9, was captain of the JV team last year, and will be a captain of the varsity team this spring. It's been a pleasure watching Bailey mature into the wonderful young woman she has become. She is kind to all, incredibly hard-working, and innately bright. She's very deserving the Brookline Superintendent's Award. Congratulations, Bailey Dwyer.
I just want to say thank you to my mom and dad and everybody who supported me along the way.
So, I want to read for everyone. Certificate reads, Bailey Dwyer, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Excellence. Congratulations.
And our second recipient is Chanel Keenan, who is going to have Ms. Jeanette Lindor, her guidance counselor, say a few words about her.
Hi, Chanel. Hi, everyone. It's great to be here, it's great to see you, Chanel, here, and also great to see Chanel's paraprofessional Cathy here, who's also wonderful. Chanel Keenan has no idea how much she has inspired me in the four years I've had the pleasure of getting to know her. She always keeps moving forward. As recently as the start of this school year, Chanel was in my office explaining how she had an accident over the summer that resulted in a fractured shoulder and a broken leg. When I was speaking to her about how tough that must have been, she said with that Chanel smile on her face, "It couldn't have happened at a better time." She explained that she had just finished her internship with the Bruins, had a few weeks to go until school started, and had just painted her nails. Chanel was born with, I hope I can pronounce this correctly, osteogenesis imperfecta, a disease in which the bones in one's body are extremely fragile. The doctors who diagnosed Chanel as a newborn found that she was born with the most severe type, which commonly ends in fatality. At the time, doctors estimated that Chanel would not make it past three months old, and now, at 17 years old, almost 18, Chanel can definitely say she has beat the odds. In her, in her four years at BHS, Chanel has gone from small-group special education classes to mainstream classes to honors classes. She has worked hard for her 3.7 grade-point average and recent National Honor Society induction. Teachers have described Chanel as resourceful, bright, having awesome participation, witty, and always making positive contributions to the classroom culture. Her current public speaking teacher commented that Chanel gives great feedback to other students about their work. Her current Spanish teacher commented to Chanel, "You work on task and with a wonderful, positive, and hilarious energy throughout the period. It's a true joy sharing the classroom with you." Chanel can read people well and adjust how she interacts with them. Chanel is naturally skilled in connecting with people from adults to peers to children. She spent the last two summers as an assistant counselor for the Brookline Recreation Department, where her duties include supervising activities for groups of children ages four to six in a summer day camp. She planned and oversaw educational and recreational activities during the four-week session, working 30 hours per week. Chanel also spent a summer working with the City of Boston in the Office of Disability Services, supporting the city-run disability awareness programming. Anyone who knows Chanel knows that she is a sports fanatic. She was able to apply her passion for sports, organization, and computer skills into being the Assistant Director of Football Operations at BHS for the past couple of years. In that role, she assisted with team roster preparation, used her public relations skills on social media to publicize games, has been a videographer and a photographer. She had the same role assisting the BHS girls varsity basketball game, basketball team, where she became known as the social media guru. BHS sports mean a lot to Chanel because she has found a place in and is a valued member of a community she did not expect to. And Chanel applies those valuable skills to working with professional, with a professional sports team this past summer as an intern with the Boston Bruins, where she assisted in strategic marketing for various events, edited videos of the, edited videos of the games, and made presentations to other members of the Bruins team. I could go on to list more of Chanel's accolades and impressive activities, but then this recommendation would be about five pages long. In Chanel's own words, she says, "I think I have beat the odds and expectations had for me. I think it is hard for me to imagine my life any different than how it has played out so far." Chanel Keenan does not want to be seen as the poor girl in the wheelchair. She wants to be known for her strength and skills, and she is. Chanel has made an impression on our BHS community as someone who is hard-working, a fighter, optimistic, and resourceful, all well-being, humble, and having a wonderful sense of humor. Chanel is the epitome of what a Brookline High School warrior should be, and is one of the most amazing students I've had the pleasure of getting to know in my 15 years as a counselor. Chanel can combine excellent academic performance, extensive extracurricular activities, jobs, and do everything with exceptional quality. Chanel's a superstar, and I'm excited to hear about the great things she will continue to accomplish in her lifetime.
Having met you over two and a half years ago when I arrived at Lincoln, it is a distinct pleasure and honor to present you with this award. Chanel Keenan, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, you are hereby awarded the Certificate of Academic Excellence. Congratulations.
Let's just take a one minute while we rearrange ourselves.
Since our last school committee meeting, a lot has happened and have quite a lengthy superintendent report. I'm going to highlight a few things in the report for the committee, starting with really just an absolutely remarkable Professional Development Day on Tuesday on Election Day. As you know, Dr. Beverly Daniel Tatum came to Brookline to kick off the Professional Development Day and was a great start to what then was a day of dialogue, discussion, and decision-making led by educators throughout the public schools of Brookline. I've included in the superintendent report a portion of the introduction that I gave at the beginning of the day when I was introducing Dr. Tatum. I just want to highlight a few things for the committee, in particular, the second paragraph and the fact that over the past several years, the national dialogue, I'm going to read it to everyone, "Our national dialogue has laid bare the deep divisions in our increasingly diverse country. The challenges faced by students throughout the country and by our students here in Brookline have not been openly discussed nor fully understood. Unfortunately, the gravitational pull of polarized rhetoric has prevented communities from working together to openly and honestly tackle these challenges. And I can say with a great deal of pride that the entire community of public schools of Brookline came together to change that, to symbolize, I say change that dialogue nationally in our community, to commit to the work that is happening and has been happening throughout the public schools of Brookline, and to do it collectively in the best interest of our students." It was really, it was a day that was so incredibly special, so powerful, and really energized the community. I think it was in contrast to the election and the difficulties faced by many people in the outcome of the election. And what was equally impressive was the way that staff came together to support one another, to support students, and have an incredibly powerful response, open dialogue discussion the day after the election yesterday and continuing into today. I think I want to highlight, you have not seen this letter, but want to highlight for you something that I sent out to all staff yesterday. It said, "Our day began with Dr. Beverly Daniel Tatum delivering a keynote where she spoke of the cycle of racism and how the cycle impacts our students throughout their lives and what we can and must do to be interrupters of this cycle. Dr. Tatum presented a vision where we break the cycle by affirming identity, building community, and cultivating leadership in and for all our students. The overwhelming commitment of the public schools of Brookline is to do this work. The work of yesterday remains our work of today. As I've said in previous letters to staff and in my introduction of Dr. Tatum, our national dialogue and the nearly two-year-long presidential campaign laid bare deep divisions that exist within our country. It was under the light of this national dialogue that we came together, and today our commitment to leading this work and this change in our community is unwavering." Bear with me for a moment, I want to continue, because this really captured the spirit and the level of depth, compassion, and understanding that was present throughout our school system for all perspectives and all, no matter where people were coming from, what perspective and belief people had about the election, or in general, how everyone came together the day following the election to support everyone. The conclusion of a deeply contentious presidential election leaves many of our students unsure of what is to come. Over 57 million people voted for each candidate, and that has been updated as the accounts have come in. So while we are sorting out what may be our own complicated feelings, reactions, and thoughts, I urge you to support our students with their reactions, whatever they may be. Please take care of your students, acknowledge the uncertainty and confusion some may be feeling, and take up the charge we recommitted to yesterday." And I share that, that was not in the superintendent's report, but share that as an incredibly powerful symbol and representation of the entire team of educators across all schools. I had the opportunity to be in four schools yesterday, one today, and saw the continued ongoing support of all of our students, no matter where, sort of, as I said, no matter where students were coming from, what perspective they were coming from, whoever they may be. So I thank everyone for that and share that and really emphasize it for the committee. I want to be very specific and thank Gabe McCormick for his incredible work and leadership in making the Professional Development Day a success, from coordinating all the logistics to developing and delivering training to 70-plus breakout facilitators. And I really have to thank the breakout facilitators. An incredible team of teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, coming together to take the keynote address and really bring it to a place where open, honest dialogue was comfortable, encouraged, diverse views were encouraged. Again, no matter where and what perspective people were coming from, allowing the space for people to come from those perspectives and to start the process of discussing and planning next steps. So I thank all the educators for that, and again, thank Gabe McCormick for his leadership in the day and making it possible. I want to update the committee on the BHS identity curriculum and the work that is being led by Dean Janay Ramos and Associate Dean Brian Poon. In particular, some of the next steps that have begun and have begun in conjunction with the team, the broad team of folks that are a part of, supporting, leading, and very committed to the identity curriculum. This includes four components, race and equity team leaders, diversity recruitment, hiring, and retention of professional learning teams. So professional learning teams considering, thinking about, planning for diversity recruitment, hiring, and retention, department and disciplinary research and pedagogy, and response to intervention, multi-tiered support systems, leadership work. The details of these four components are highlighted in the superintendent's report. I want to make a specific note, when Elena Sullivan comes to do a presentation on last year's hiring, a specific note that the work that began at the high school with diversity hiring, started by teachers, students, I think I want to very much highlight the voice of students bringing the issue to the forefront of the PSB and the role that students played in the process. And really, I want to recognize the significant steps forward as a community that BHS made last year. The idea and the goal of this professional learning team is to understand the why, the how, and best practice at the high school and to continue that and take those lessons learned in conjunction with our HR team out to our K-8 schools to benefit all of our students throughout the PSB. Grade-level release day work has begun with the different formats, where grade-level release time has been returned to the schools in terms of the planning, the focus, the design of the days, the school principals, teams of teachers. And again, there's a great deal of detail that's spelled out in the superintendent report about what different topics have been at different schools. I want to highlight just a few pieces. Preliminary feedback from Grade 1, 2, and 3 days includes that some early successes of these days are time for teachers, school leaders, and specialists to learn alongside one another. Targeted professional development based on educator needs and student needs, as identified by various data sources, anecdotal observations, student learning, the BOYA, the MCAS, the BAS, the ability to implement creative means of collaborating, and sessions facilitated by school math and literacy specialists who know the context of each school and serve as resources for continued work beyond the release day. I had the real pleasure of joining the afternoon of the kindergarten release day, which was held across all schools at We洛克, so that as part of the day, the team of kindergarten teachers could discuss what had happened over the summer with the state's elimination of the Early Childhood Grant, and really begin prioritizing with me, with Leslie Ryan Miller, with Nicole Gittens, on where do we want to go forward, what do we want and need to put into our budget recommendation that will come to the school committee in several months' time, what is critical in our early childhood program for the continued success of our students. I had planned to be there for a short period of time and couldn't leave, and was really thrilled that I was able to stay. And again, feedback on this day was incredibly positive, with one teacher explaining, "It has been a long time," emphasis on long, "since our kindergarten voices have been invited to the table. I hope that our concerns and feedback are taken into consideration when making decisions that will impact our students and our teaching. Thank you for a well-structured, well-planned, and well-executed learning experience. Thank you for respecting and valuing our expertise and for helping spark a new wave of excitement." And just want to commit to the committee that that sentiment, that notion of including the powerful, the deeply professional voices, is a commitment that I have make to everyone and have asked for in the creation of our budget so that our fiscal resources are aligned with the identified needs of our very, very strong teams. I have had the pleasure of visiting many schools, Lawrence Upper Devotion, BHS, on three separate occasions, Heath on two separate occasions, including beep at Heath and kindergarten, beep at Runkle, Lincoln this morning, and you can see the description of what was observed and what I saw and just the great time that I had. I just wanted to read the end. I have to say, Lincoln today is one of my all-time favorite science experiments where students create clouds. They actually create clouds, and it's amazing. You should see it. I have some pictures. There may have been matches involved, so I will not include Mary Ellen on the sharing of those pictures. And I just want to summarize, I include this level of detail. There's a lot of detail about the school visits, and I include the level of detail with this description of the release day work to capture the strength of the public schools of Brookline and the commitment of every member of the PSB team to the success of our students. These visits are also critical in my work and my clear goal of aligning the resources, supports, and structures of our district in the ways that best support principals and teachers and their work on behalf of students. And lastly, I want to share as an update, and we'll come back to this in much more detail after, much later in the evening, in response to requests from the school committee at the workshop at the end of October, have created a document, we have created a document which lays out a timeline, deliverables for all of the priorities, including many of the goals that were laid out, as well as the big challenges and the work ahead with, our building inventory, which has begun, diversity recruitment, our night-school work, our BHS expansion work, hiring of permanent principals for BHS, Heath, and Runkle, our annual enrollment projection work, and more. So I will come back to that later in the evening.
So if there are questions on the last three pages, if we can hold them till, oh, let's see, 9:15 tonight, that would be great. Questions for the superintendent? Thank you so much. Questions for the superintendent? All right. It's terrific. There's a tremendous amount of detail in here, so we can continue to read it and ask questions afterwards. Ms. Jennings, I apologize, we skipped agenda item because the students came. We skipped your agenda item, so we will go back to agenda item number three, Alice, if you'd be willing to.
So I think the, yeah. Hey, my name is Alice, I'm the student rep. The most notable thing that has happened since I last gave a student report has been the election, and BHS has been digesting, there was kind of a, some kind of alteration of a normal school schedule where classes were somewhat replaced with therapy. So the school community is mourning and figuring out ways to work around it, and Headmaster Maya gave a, I guess, a comment. I'm not going to read it, but I'll summarize it, which it was that while all the school admins should not be biased, and we don't wish to exclude some of our students, we, as a school, can't uphold bigotry, and we need to work on creating and sustaining an accepting environment in our school. In legislature and in student council, we have done our elections, so the students have been elected, we have elected co-chairs. I am now the co-chair of legislature with Mr. Coonley, and we have gone through and found topics that we're interested in exploring for this year. There has been, in the faculty, there is discussion of the same thing, like figuring out what to talk about for this year, with discussion of dress code and homework and stress load on students. And then the identity curriculum has also been a focus of the faculty and has also been much appreciated by the students. And for something that I think is important but may not be aware of, is there is a student publication that was featured in the SAG on Wednesday called Man Hater, which is a slightly provocative name, but that is for good reasons. It is an independent feminist publication that people are using as a collective, organized being to express their frustrations with sexism in the school. And lots of very meaningful articles are being posted very regularly. And I'm part of the team, and we are working with the administration to talk about what is the boundaries of publications in the school, what is okay to publish, what is okay to distribute. But I think it's worthwhile to say to the body here that there is a lot of frustration, and people are now finding a way to express that in a publication that is out. Yeah, that is pretty much it.
Thank you so much. Questions for our student representative? Ms. Stone?
Hey, Alice, the last thing you mentioned, Man Hater, is that online with the SAG Hall as well?
It's not part of the SAG, but the SAG posted an article about it.
Okay. But it's accessible, publicly accessible?
Yeah. It's www-manhater.wordpress.com, I think.
Wordpress, okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Charlofsky?
Just a quick question. Was there mock election this year at the high school?
There was not a mock election, but there was a stat survey about who you would vote for, if that interests you.
Okay. Other questions? Sure, Ms. Bott.
I had the pleasure of going to two mock elections at Heath in Early Childhood, and one in K- one in K, I'm going to, KF, thank you, where there's a picture of me with my feet hanging out of the voting box that you had to crawl into. And what was so remarkable is the five-year-olds were able to fully explain and thrilled about the election process. And then one of the Beeb classes also participated in an election on the preference for either vanilla or chocolate ice cream. It was a tie and Vicki Milstein and I voted and it stayed a tie, I believe, to the frustration of some of the students. But to credit, to celebrate the election, the students had hoodies, so they won either way, so.
I just have one question. You had mentioned that in the headmaster, had mentioned how to respect various points of view while still being clear that bigotry was not acceptable. I'm just curious if you have any other experiences to share or conversations to share about how that played out? If you don't, that's okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak for my personal, which is like, I can't speak for the entire student body, but I think that there is a big discussion going on about what the appropriate way to deal with emotions is when you were in a very, very, like, I say we're a person in a community. And when there are people being hurt very severely and people whose lives and safety are being, like, put under pressure, how can we deal with that and those heightened emotions when there are people in our community who believe and support that? And it's a difficult conversation and I think faculty is doing a great job in supporting conversation and dialogue. And also, just being real with the students has been one of the biggest, like, from the feedback I got from my peers is that the best thing teachers have done is to sit in class and say how they feel and to tell the stories of how, like, they told their kids in the morning. And how you need to have reality in school. School is not isolated. We need to teach through reality and through the circumstances, which there's also a great SAG article about in the recent issue.
Okay. Later on in the agenda, we're going to talk about the high school building committee structure. And since you may or may not be here by that point in the evening, I just wanted to let you know that there is going to be a student representative on that committee. How that student gets chosen and whatnot needs to get sorted out, but it's, we have a committee coming up that will have student voice on it because we have had such a positive experience over the last number of years with a student representative at this table, you and your predecessors, so thank you. So unfortunately, you've created more work for yourself or someone else, but important work to have a voice in the structure of the school. All right, if there are no more questions, the superintendent's report was supposed to, or was talking about a variety of issues, the professional development day focused on racism, the identity curriculum update, and a number of pieces, a number of other things in here, which sort of thematically go with two short presentations on our hiring and diversity profile and the Massachusetts accountability and assistance system level determinations. And the only reason that we are going to keep them here and start public comment at 7:45 as scheduled is because there are people who have said that they're very interested in the diversity hiring information, and this is when it's here, and I don't want them to miss it. So if we can just go through this efficiently, I appreciate that. If we can go through efficiently. I appreciate that. It's, it, no, no, please, it is, the point is that there are other people who are here for these things and are also watching at home expecting things from this district in terms of hiring and diversity profile and the MCAS and our achievement gap. So if we can just do these efficiently, that would be terrific. Well, I didn't expect to have such a huge crowd, but I'm delighted that everybody's here to hear about the great work that we did around diversity hiring last year. I understand that, but I'm glad you're here anyway. So, okay, sure. Okay. So I think you all know that this is the reporting that we do every year, the EO five and the EPIMS report, just a quick refresher on that from last year. I'll just launch right into the information. We hired eighty-two new Unit A members this year, twenty of whom are educators of color. We hired one hundred and twenty-three new paraprofessionals this year, twenty-six of whom are aides of color. And of the sixteen new administrators that we hired this year, both non-aligned and Unit B, eight of the sixteen, or fifty percent, are staff of color. Here's the gender and age range breakdown for the new educators of color. They come in with about four years of experience. These numbers are similar to last year's. Here are the districts that Brookline compares itself to. Sure, yeah. So this year I included FTE because I wanted you to see where we are relative, in terms of FTE, relative to these other districts. The numbers are similar to last year. You'll see Boston didn't report EPIMS data this year, it's not on the DESI site. And then for the past five years, you can see our recruiting efforts. You see this here, and this is largely due, I believe, to the emphasis of a high school placed on diversity hiring this year, but this year you'll see significant increase in the number of educators of color that we hired. Last year, eleven point five percent, this year, twenty-four point four percent. So again, you know, I think a few schools, not to single them out, but I think a few schools put a lot of emphasis, certainly the high school, the Lincoln School, and Devotion School spent a lot of time and effort and it shows. And you saw the material, in the materials, I've done, as I did last year, breakdowns of new hires, new staff, and then by various segments, including each of the schools individually, and then the entire district and non-aligned staff as well. Attrition is roughly the same as it was last year. Our data shows that we are able to essentially retain a lot of educators of color over time. Sixty-two point one percent of the educators of color hired over the last year continue to work for the public schools of Brookline. These are the, these are the, thank you. Thank you. So these are the job fairs that we attended last year. This was something you all asked that we pay a lot of attention to. I will say, I think we'll be a little bit more strategic this year about the ones that we go to. And you'll see the attendees, again, the high school staff were very well represented. The high school's diversity recruiting efforts were led by Deb Holman and Chris Vick, who of course no longer worked for the district, but put a lot of work in and passed the torch to Janay Ramos, so I'm happy to work with her this year. And so our, again, our recruiting efforts for next year will be to continue to leverage our relationships with these groups. Leslie University has reached out to us recently, they have an urban scholars program that we'd like to partner up with. That essentially replaced today's students, tomorrow's teachers program, the urban scholars program that Leslie University now has. And we've also started working with this group, Match Beyond, and they have referred some paraprofessional candidates and per diem substitutes to the district. You heard the superintendent talk about the wonderful professional development day we had on Tuesday and the discussion around building a sense of community. We've had a particular focus on civil rights this last year, and I'm sure that the school committee's heard about some of the great work we've done around training of our administrators, around how to do civil rights investigations. The online application system that we use, SchoolSpring, we are upgrading that this year to this new system called Recruiting Hire. So it will still be called SchoolSpring, it will still look the same, it has a lot more functionality, and we think that will help with our recruiting efforts and help principals in the hiring process as well. And we've talked about continuing to do hiring committee training as we did last year around proper search protocols, unconscious bias, and competency-based interviewing. As I said last year, I think we need to continue to focus our efforts internally, focus on our job descriptions, focus on the messaging that we do. I still think that this is something that we need to work on as a district. I think it's, the progress that we made this year shows that it works. I was lucky enough to work on all three principal searches and both deputy superintendent searches this year and was delighted to do so and delighted at the results that I played a part in. And then the superintendent and I have talked about, you know, other steps such as creating a diversity leadership committee and then how we can better support the individual schools perhaps around protocols, around affirmative action representatives for every search, things like that. Again, we need to spend a little bit more time on onboarding, exit interviews, which we started doing last year. The idea behind the hiring profiles is that we really sort of take a look at this data, figure out where we need to focus our efforts, not that we do it once a year and then put it on the shelf, but that we really use it to, as a tool, to help guide us in our recruiting Any questions or comments?
Thank you so much.
Dr. Jackson?
No, no, but I'd be happy to look at that.
One of the things you mentioned was that some, you named or identified a certain subset of schools that had worked particularly hard or had put in particular effort, and I guess I'm trying to understand, how do we get to a place where you're saying that about all our schools and what's currently required as opposed to optional in this process?
That's a good question. I think, you know, I think the change in leadership this year has made a significant difference. I think, I think people understand that my office is a resource in a way that they didn't in the past. I hope that every school starts to recognize the importance of this work and reaches out. You know, I think we, I think my office needs to do a better job of making sure that the folks in the districts really know why this work is important and how to do it, because I can't be at all of the schools all the time. And again, you know, a lot of my effort last year was focused on some of the higher-level administrator searches. So I think we need to spread the word and build capacity. That's what's going to make a difference.
Ms. Stone? I was wondering if you had a sense as to how the hiring numbers compared to the applicant pipeline?
In terms of how diverse is, are the pools?
Yeah, how diverse is the pool?
Could I have to tell you that I was pleasantly surprised in the, again, the searches that I worked on last year, and we provided those statistics for each, the principal searches, deputy superintendent searches, we were really watching the pools very closely so that if we felt like they weren't, didn't have enough representation, diversity representation in them, that we would do additional outreach efforts. And we didn't have to for those searches. But I think we, what I'd like to get, the schools in the habit of doing, is monitoring their applicant pools a little bit more closely, reaching out to HR when they find that they're not diverse enough. But I've been pleasantly surprised that we do have a number of diverse applicants for positions. I think that where we, I think some of our barriers are internal. I think that we hire folks that we know, folks that have worked in the district before, student teachers, interns, and that's not a bad thing. It's just that our pipeline of student interns and teachers, and student teachers and interns haven't been particularly diverse. So we're hoping that partnering with Leslie and its urban scholars program will help change that a little bit. We're hoping that our partnerships with some other groups will help affect that a little bit more. But I think that we need to work at our internal barriers and change people's minds.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, I just want to say thank you so much. We've been talking about this for a long time and over the last two years, three years really, there's been a tremendous ramp up in the activity, especially around specific commitments, around outreach, specific commitments around technological approaches, specific training for unconscious bias, and many other things in the process. So thank you very much. Please thank everybody who's been part of this, everybody who was listed on the slide. We're very grateful and it's great to see a doubling of the numbers and there's more work to do, so thank you. All right, let's move on to the MCAS determination. So, so again, just sort of thematically, the superintendent was focused primarily on climate and culture and professional development and some of those structures. Ms. Sullivan was focused on diversity in hiring, and this is going to be focused on student achievement across our various subgroups as soon as we get going. Okay, thank you.
So this is the proficiency, the MCAS proficiency rate over the past five years. And so the most high proficiency rates have remained consistent over the past five years. This slide is focused on our K to eight, our K to eight schools, all of the schools, ELA, math, and science proficiency rates. This slide shows those same, this backup, this is for all of the students. This next slide shows the breakdown of rates, and this is where you can see the persistent achievement gap that exists in the district and the work that needs to happen. The achievement gap has remained consistent in black over the past five years. And our students who have been impacted the most are the red line. The red line happens to be African-American and black.
And so just to be clear, the red line is black and African-American, and it looks like it's at, on the top left, fifty-seven percent? Is that right, for 2016? And the, okay, and the blue lines are Asian, white, the green line is Hispanic, Latino, and purple is multiracial? Okay. Wait till the end, yes.
Explain what multiracial is.
Yeah.
Multiracial in our district, seventy percent of our students that identify as multiracial are Asian and white.
Okay. Okay. Do you have a clarifying question or just a general?
I was just wondering what the correlation of the black, African-American, and Hispanic, Hispanic-Latino graphs are there? Like, they seem to be very well matched. I wondered like what caused that over time?
Sir, this is an open question, Q and A, I'm sorry. Keep going, please.
For all educators, this is the first time we see data. How ironic that we're not important. This is the thing.
Uh, sir, this is an open question, Q and A, I'm sorry. Keep going, please. I appreciate. This slide is our disability, and again, there's a persistent achievement gap for us with disabilities over the past five years. Achievement is flat for all students. It is flat for disabilities, but it's also, it is also persistent achievement gap for us with disabilities. These are our ELL students, our English language learners, and they did similar differences, a much smaller gap than math, and a lot of that is because math assessments aren't necessarily always heavy in the language, and so that is probably why we see a small.
In the achievement rates, for those, thank you. If you look at the, the bar graph at the top, you can see our students that, who are economically disadvantaged by race, that they are not performing as well as their non-economically disadvantaged peers. What's even more interesting is the first table. When you look at the non-economically disadvantaged African-American students, they are being outperformed by our economically disadvantaged Asian, multi, and white students. So there is some work and some questions that come up there. The bottom two tables are the actual numbers of students who are performing in needs improvement and warning failing across the district. This is, sorry, this slide was yellow, this is math, and the same thing is true, the same patterns hold for math. So what is happening this year is all of the schools have this data, and I think what we are working on now and, and school leaders are working on now is how do we start to work with this data, and how do we give this information to our teachers and paras so that we can figure out how to use the data in order to improve instruction? They have the data for the past five years, it is disaggregated, it has all the information for grades, and we have identified, they know by name every student who is performing in the needs improvement, warning, failing areas. These are the actual numbers of students. If you look at the total number across the bottom, there may be one student in that number several times if they have fallen into needs improvement or warning in multiple test areas. What is hopeful about this is the numbers are not great. There are some really specific, we know who this is, we know over time who this kid is, who this student is, and we can target, hopefully target some support to make those changes. Keeping in mind that the MCAS is a measure, it is not the end-all, be-all, it's not a particularly high bar for students to master and for us to, to work on, but what are the implications? If students are not doing well on MCAS and they're not doing well on SATs, they're probably not having great college acceptance rates. So it does have an impact, but this is just one snapshot around data and students. So the work that we're doing right now is we're working with principals, vice principals, and coordinators around instructional leadership. How do we focus our energy to have the highest impact? The district-led release days have been turned back to principals, as you heard Superintendent Bott mention earlier today. We are working to share more student learning data with schools and to take first steps. I mean, you just don't throw data at teachers or at principals without having a plan in how to use the data to improve instruction. We want to look at how do we develop year-long approaches to professional development so that folks are able to have the tools necessary to support student growth. My office and Sam's office are working together in order to coordinate support for students so that all students, excuse me, all students are considered, and it's not special education, general education, but how we work together in order to support all students. And then we really need to start working on a long-term plan of how to roll things out step by step so that we are being systematic and systemic in our approaches to solving, solving and addressing the achievement gap that persists in this district. Goals for our long-term work are around common goals and expectations, common student outcomes, opportunities for common planning and assessments, increased tier-one instructional practices, and increased focus on meeting specific goals. So how do we move students that are in needs improvement, high needs improvement into proficient? Because that's kind of the way to address those needs. And that's it?
Right, so thank you, and thank you for saying that this is just one measure. There are many other conversations that are going on around climate and culture, around hiring, around, you know, other measures, qualitative, quantitative, all kinds of things, so just one, one piece in a bigger puzzle. Questions on this though, because it's, the gaps are, are quite persistent and upsetting?
Thank you. We saw this in curriculum a while back and also at the workshop, so I've already registered how profoundly difficult some of those data are and what kind of work we clearly need to do. But relevant to, I'm sure that there are many, many questions in this, in this room about the data that just got shown and to your, to your slide that said how this is getting, how we roll out the information and the data in the district? What will be the opportunities for our educators to look at it, consider not just, not just their own students and their schools, but the whole district? How are we, how are we doing that so that they have an opportunity to sit with the data and work with it?
Right. So I think what we are really trying to work on is how do we provide professional development so that teachers are able to use data? I applaud, I don't know, somebody over there said, why, why are we not seeing this? And I think there is, has to be a counter narrative in the district around data, its usefulness, and how we can be very intentional in our practice when we have data, usable data to support students. And so some of this is still in the planning stages, and I think, you know, to have gone from not really using data in a very consistent way to throwing data at folks is not the way to go. And so there's some work that's happening in my office along with Gabe, who runs professional development, to figure out how to support that. We are also looking at taking a group of folks to a DataWise course at Harvard in January, and then again in the summer, so we can start to build capacity around data use in the district.
And I know that this, because this is a public meeting, so all of these presentations are put online for the public to be able to look at. If members of the public or members of our staff have questions about this particular presentation and the data in it, how can they ask those questions?
So I, I would say very much, and I think, I'm glad that Ms. Gittens said, somebody in the audience commented, you know, why, why are we seeing this for the first time? I think that's a, it's a troubling question, and that's, the, the goal is changing that, putting the information out. Dr. Jackson said sometime recently, you know, this is thirty thousand foot, right? This is, you know, MCAS is not meant to tell you about an individual student. It was never designed for that. It, in many ways, has been used for that incorrectly by districts, but it's supposed to give a picture that then asks, drives the questions, what does this look like for, right? And you can sort of fill that in. And so what I would say is, we, you know, in, in the, both the spirit and the commitment that I've said multiple times, I would say to anyone in the audience and to anyone in the public watching it online, or if questions come up, to email someone on our team. So Nicole, Gabe, me, so that we can make sure that we are in fact answering the questions. And in some, some instances where this has happened in schools already, there then is a, so if we had X, we could do Y. You know, we can do X now and hope for Y outcome, if we had Y, we could do Z. And those are the kind of conversations that are really important to me and, and in, in the, in the building of a budget, right? Our budget should reflect our priorities for achievement for all students, so, sorry for the long answer.
The other thing is, the other thing is, in some of the release days that are happening with, with building principals, they are actually digging into data and looking at this, you know, in, in small groups.
Any other questions? Yeah, so, hang on. So, so first of all, I want to say thank you. The, I just want to reiterate, the school committee's goal, I would like to reiterate the school.
That's rude.
I'd like to reiterate that.
He has a question, he has a right to ask a question.
I'd like to reiterate that the school committee's goal, similar to what the superintendent just said, is not to get high MCAS scores. Nobody here wants to get high MCAS scores for, for their own sake. But as just a, an overall look at what does this mean about persistent gaps, that is really important to us, and so digging down into all of the hard work, that's why we put all three of these presentations together around culture, staffing, and scores, just in context, that's actually the work. So thank you for, for doing that, and thank you to the principals for doing that work.
I can add, I can add that what, what, how we need to think about the MCAS scores is low MCAS outcomes means a whole bunch of things for students. So those students who are not performing well on MCAS are not having good outcomes in general.
And I think that's what we're all interested in. Okay, all right. We're, we're going to move on to the next agenda item because it's public comment time. If there are questions, please do, if there are, if, if there are questions, please do, as the superintendent asks, please do email either the superintendent or Ms. Gittens. It's time for public comment, and so first I just want to say thank you for everybody, for your patience. So thank you for coming, thank you for your patience. We have eleven agenda items for four hours and almost a dozen presenters, so thank you for being patient with everyone else's time. The way we do public comment is, on the agenda, it says fifteen minutes total, but we have many more than five people signed up. So what we normally do is we go as long as people are here and would like to make public comment. We do hold people to three minutes, but we let as many people speak as they want to speak. So you'll get a thirty-second warning and then a time's up warning. I do ask you to respect that so that everybody can speak. After this, we are having discussions, we have another two hours worth of agenda from Architects and about the ninth school project, and we have more teachers coming in, more staff coming in later tonight, so just please be respectful of all of those people who are to come after you. So I have a list of, one, two, three, whoa, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Can somebody put the lights back on? Thank you. So I have twelve people here, if there are more people, we'll have the list.
They're fixing it.
Someone add my name.
All right, great. So as soon as the lights are fixed, we will get started. Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Do you have a good?
Twenty-two.
Ben, can you help with the lights?
So at, we have twenty-two people, so at three minutes each, we're going to be here for about an hour, so we're going to do it, but let's just keep it moving. So the first person is Dr. Wender Shibo, you have three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dickoff. In light of the diversity and equity issue? I'm actually going to really not go through the comments that I wrote out so much as to respond to what's been raised this evening. Just a, a quick on diversity and equity, you know, I'm tremendously proud to be part of the union movement that has done a tremendous amount to ensure that communities can move beyond data crunching into teaching the whole child with connection to staff who are themselves reflecting the children. And I, I will say, even though we're talking about paras tonight, how disappointed the BEU negotiators were that the school committee rejected a proposal by our coordinators in the BEU that would have allowed them to hire staff of color from around the country because there's language that restricts what will be recognized for the purpose of placing people on salary. And that was something we felt we really offered as a very, very productive proposal. But let's, let's talk about paras, also out of the union movement, professionalized first through efforts to achieve dignity on the job, including with a livable wage. We consider ourselves in that proud tradition, we think it's good for our students. I'm very honored to be part of a team, negotiators, that sit in those chairs, everybody, and represent every single type of educator, paraprofessional and administrator in the district. And I have to laugh when I hear references to the BEU leadership, let alone the president, because all of the stuff that's happening in negotiations is done by a remarkable group of teachers, paras, and administrators. And it is they, and I'm just going to really focus on a little bit of what we are trying to do at the table. We were very saddened at ten o'clock last night that the school committee shut down the conversation, and so they would have no more discussions with us, even though we were very interested in working on really playing with some of the proposals and find common ground, and I'm going to be very specific. We don't think that a two-tiered salary system honors the important work of paras that are not in those rooms because they are doing tremendously skilled work. And we were looking for a way, if you've got a certain amount of money, to make sure that it was fairly distributed and available through the initiative of any para to be able to access that skill. We also have a proposal that we were flatly, that was flatly rejected, I think it's very important for everyone to understand. It costs zero money, zero. It costs zero money, zero. It is seniority protection for being here and layoffs and recalls so that their skill and experience is honored. This is, you're using my time. We, we really want you to appreciate how much discussion there is that comes to the table. There's no union out there and some union boss with the, you know, with the brass knuckles and stuff. And with that in mind, some folks are going to help me. We have here over a thousand pledge cards from our members.
We're at time.
They are, they are dedicated and determined to support their negotiators, to have a fair contract, to have one that is going to be possible for dignity. We're not all or nothing. We're not trying to bust the budget. We're trying to do something that is fair and right and will give you time to find the money.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think you'll learn more now. Thanks very much.
Mr. Block? And next is, next is Mr. Okawa. You have three minutes. Mr. Block and then next is Mr. Okawa. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Block. I'm a teacher at Devotion. I'm a Brookline resident and Brookline homeowner. My children went to the Devotion School. I'm trying to make some sense of the situation. I think one possibility is that you don't understand the significance of the work of the paras. And let me assure you, it's, it's an essential element of the teaching team. It's a, plays a decisive role in providing services to our students. Having a stable, trained, secure workforce of paras is very, very important for meeting the equity goals that we, and our, our teaching goals that we have for our students. So I would ask you to, are you prepared to answer the questions that, are these people have a livable, do the paras have a livable wage? Do they have the wage scale that's comparable to, so, to our comparable communities, not just at a, in terms of the incremental improvements that you, that you put up here, but from a full profile? Is it a fair wage scale? And is our turnover worse than other communities? We have to, you have to be prepared to defend a full picture of this being an equitable compensation for this essential part of our workforce. And you have to be able to convince me and my neighbors that this is happening because the teachers feel it's not. And right now, I don't think you made the case in the presentation earlier that this is, this is happening. So it's not, it's not to say there's not enough money to do the right thing. If it's the right thing and it's the right thing for this workforce and the right thing in turn for our most vulnerable and deserving students who they serve, we have to do the right thing. We can't put the burden of financial austerity on the backs of our most vulnerable employees. It's a time for economic equity. This is equity for our workforce. This is equity for our staff that serves our students. We have to do the right thing. And you have to make a full case that you're doing the right thing in a decisive and courageous manner on this, this issue. And you have to make it to the town. Otherwise, the parents will not be behind you, the neighborhood won't be behind you, and the teachers will not be behind you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Okawa and then Kirnan Bait?
Baggy.
Baggy. Okay. You're on deck. Three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Stephen Okawa. I work at Brookline, Brookline High School in the bridge room. I'm a para there. And I just want to talk a little about just the experience of being pretty much the working poor and just maybe you've never heard it before, or maybe you've never heard anyone's experiences in it before, but I live in Dorchester on the top floor of a family home. Basically, I live with my mother. I live with my mother? Say that louder. Thank you.
She can see on TV.
Yeah. And, oh, and I have to take the red line to the green line every day. It takes about 45 minutes. And by the time I get in, I'm probably already very tired and a little bit exhausted, so I can't really be at my best. My background is that I have obviously an undergrad and I have two master's degrees, one from Western Connecticut State and the other from the University of Edinburgh. So that means I think most people in this room are generally overqualified and overworked and they're definitely underpaid, otherwise we wouldn't be here. Just to give you a comparison, food service workers make about 16K a year. My sister works at Dunkin' Donuts, makes about 16K a year. So we're making, what, two, three grand more than that for a food service job you don't need all my qualifications for. And I just want to talk about how basically this is the, the new, this is the new normal, not just here or in Brookline or in Massachusetts, but in the United States and all Western countries. And that basically, I think that you can't expect us to come in every day and be at our best and ask us to smile and ask us to just basically, for the world, ask the world from us at such low wages and at the same time that we don't have maybe an outside life that is, matches maybe how good our job is and how much we, like, our, our jobs and like, how much we like to work with the kids. And frankly, it's, to me, I feel sometimes ashamed and embarrassed about how, how little I make and how just absolutely, it's denigrated. I talked to a lady outside, I won't say her name, but we talked about, she was telling me about going on fuel assistance and going on welfare and going on basic other subsidies that we shouldn't have to really endure just to have a normal existence and be able to enjoy our lives and develop the way we want to develop. And basically, I just want to thank all the workers in here and thank, I think you're all doing a great job. And I hope I've given you some insight into what I think generally maybe we're all, this is just my experience, but I just wanted to give you some insight to it. And maybe you've never heard how much about the working poor, but that's, hi. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Okawa. And next will be Mr. Cross. You can also pick up the microphone so you can be heard. You don't have to.
How's this?
There you go. Yeah, there you go. Stand up.
Cool. This is my first year working at Brookline. I also want to say that I'm also the advisor for the Speech and Debate Club. I'm also worked with the Peer Leader Group and was their moderator for the debate on Monday night. And I'm not saying this to brag, I'm saying this to say I love this school district. And I'm also extremely embarrassed being part of this school district. My girlfriend is a grad student. She makes 30K. She pays for things for me. I live in Cambridge. I live a town away because I can't afford to live in the town that I work in. I love Brookline, but I can't actually live in Brookline. I am consistently embarrassed, talking with other people my age, that I make 18, 18.5K before I give money back to pay for my health insurance and before union dues. And the contract that I hear is, if we want more money, we have to work harder for you. That's actually what you are saying to us. Not that you will be giving us more money, it's that we don't earn the money. I'm actually personally very offended by that. I love any school district that I work in. I have no issue doing speech and debate for free. For the second after speech and debate, I work an additional five to six hours all over Massachusetts, driving all over the place, just so I can afford to live in an apartment that's significantly smaller than this room. And so I can wake up, I can't actually afford to go to a gym, so I have to wake up earlier to run and do basic fitness. To be clear, the paycheck that you give us does not cover, yeah, someone just said literally "life." No. Thankfully, breathing's still free, but it barely covers food. It definitely doesn't fully cover the gas that I have to spend on a regular basis to get more work outside of school. I love working with the students, but sometimes it is generally hard waking up in the morning and say, I'm going to a job which, some point now, I actually have a master's in teaching and I accepted this because I was told that would be a great opportunity to be involved with such a dedicated school district.
30 seconds.
Thank you. I see dedication from the students, but I don't see dedication from the leadership. What I see is, you want more money? You have to work harder for it. Come in earlier. So that means if I want to actually feel physically fit and actually feel like I'm doing something, wake up at 5 o'clock instead of 6 o'clock. Do you really want that for us? Thank you. I'm going to ask my friends to respect my time if we call the applause. Thank you so much.
30 seconds. Oh, three minutes, please.
Hi. My name is Ronald Cross. I work as a paraprofessional at Brookline High School and a learning center. I make a little over $17,000 a year. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. You know, this is my first year as a full-time employee for the town of Brookline. And as a learning center paraprofessional, I spend every single day helping students with IEPs keep their heads above water as they struggle with balancing learning disabilities, academic expectations, and outside responsibilities. In my specific position, I work with 60 different students throughout the day. 60 different students I touch every single day. And I can tell you every single one of their names. I know most of their dreams. I know what they struggle with. And I know what they expect from me every day. You know, I have to be on my game because if I'm off even a little bit, they're quick to call me out. Mr. C, why do you still have shaving cream on your face? Sometimes it's hard for me to be on my game. I'm not going to lie. Because of my pay, I do have to work a second full-time job just to pay the bills at Blanchard's Liquors in Austin. Come see me. And put food on the table. But that is not an excuse to let my kids down even for a minute. And I hope you guys can hear this at home. I will not let my kids down even for a minute. There's been a lot of turnover in the Special Education Department at Brookline High School this year. In my classroom alone, and I really thank you for your ears, in my classroom alone, there have been four different main teachers. This has been a very destabilized environment for my kids. And I've had to juggle a lot of responsibilities to ensure that they don't slip through the cracks because they matter. I have had meetings with parents. I've sent emails. I've collaborated and strategized on how to best serve these students. I've created checklists in my own time, custom tailored to help students find new ways to make things work for them so that they can actually, you know, graduate. That's kind of important, you know? I come in early. I stay late so that students can make up work or take a test. I have to run around the school harassing many different teachers, trying to get printouts and check grades and try to make sure kids have everything turned in on time because they're not always organized as part of their IEP. I'm not complaining. I love these kids. But it becomes really hard to encourage them as they go out into this community to tell them that the people of this town will treat them fairly and equally, that adults will fight for them and be on their side and do what's right for them. I'm not sure how much I believe that, to then try to really instill that in them after I just got three hours of sleep. Holy, holy.
30 seconds.
Some of the kids in my learning centers are the lowest performing students in the school. Why? Part of the reason is because as new teachers fill the role in my room and become acquainted with the position, students are struggling every day and I can't reach them all to give them the attention they deserve. By not giving employees fair pay, it becomes very difficult to maintain staff that truly serve our children. As I look around this room, I see the faces of parents that trust me to do right by their kids. And I look at this panel of school committee members, the student excluded, and I see that your stubbornness directly translates to my classroom, that your unwillingness to put a few extra dollars in my paycheck is worth the cost of jeopardizing students' success, that your greed, please, and bureaucracy stifle longevity in staff and cause me to have to train a new teacher on what's going on with these kids every four weeks. And at what point do you start doing your job as school committee members and keep your commitment to these parents that you will protect their children from any and all harm? Don't clap!
We're, we're at time. We're past time, actually.
If you ask me, they need protection from you. I look at these kids in the eye and I see their dreams. I do my best not to let them down every day and I need to know that you're going to do your best not to let me down starting right now.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Listen, if you can, so the architects are, the architects are supposed to start at eight. If you can, I think the architects are in the hallway, they're supposed to start at eight. If you can let them know that we have about 11 more people, maybe more, and that's 33 minutes each, so if they want to go get a coffee or something, come back. Okay. Next is Charlotte Craig and then after that, Daniel DeBowie.
I'm going to have her go next.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Can you just tell us your name and if you're on here?
My name is Valerie Freus and I'm a proud Driscoll parent. And that young man over there is, is the one-to-one para for, for my son Jake. And he, he's the reason that I'm in the room tonight. I had no intention of coming to the school committee tonight, but when I, when I heard what a pittance he made, I was horrified. He, he is the reason that my son is succeeding in any manner at Driscoll School right now. Without him, he, he wouldn't, he, he wouldn't be happy at all at the school. He is integrated into the classroom. They have a connection like no other. I, I've met paras in this room who are helping me to, to entertain them, who don't know me or, or my kids from a hole in the wall, but just out of the goodness of our heart, we're doing it. And I thank all of you for, for doing that and for being here and for taking care of our kids. I, I really, I, I, as a parent of two kids with ASD, want to impress upon you the, the huge role that paras play in the success or the lack thereof for our students. $16,000 a year. We're going on Veterans Day. That young man over there is a veteran and I want to thank him for his service to my child, to the district, and to the country. And I, I want to make sure that there's a path for him to stay in Brookline. And it doesn't look, based on anything that I've seen, that there's a path for him to stay in Brookline. There's a path for him to go to Newton and to make $40,000 in 10 years, which still isn't enough money. But there's a path there. I don't want him to go down the street. I want him to stay in Brookline and stay with our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next is Daniel DeBowie.
I think that proves our point.
You, you can pick up the microphone if you don't want to bend over.
Thank you.
It's your choice.
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Craig and I'm an occupational therapist that works in BEEP, Brookline Early Education Program. I'm here tonight to share information and support the much-needed increase in salary for our paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals are essential to our functioning as a school system. They're on the front line of working with students. They are crucial to carrying over the skills I work on with special needs students in therapy. They are the busiest people I know and have a very complex job. Everything from engaging children in math, art, and writing activities, interacting with children to facilitate their language skills with peers, helping students take a sensory break, assisting with toileting, snack time, cleaning, taking data for us, helping to make classroom materials, and on and on and on. Recently, I know of two examples of our staff lost to Newton Public Schools. These were loyal, talented individuals who left not because they were dissatisfied with working in the Brookline programs, but simply because they could no longer afford to get paid so much less per hour in Brookline. Newton pays their starting paraprofessionals 1725 per hour and Brookline pays 1540. Step eight, the gap widens. Newton 2438, Brookline 2014. Step 14, Newton 3471. Brookline, still 2014 because we only have eight steps. You do the math. It concerns me greatly that we are currently understaffed with paras in several BEEP classrooms and it has been difficult to hire, to hire paras at the low salary we are offering to take these positions. They are remaining unfilled for longer periods of time, sometimes with substitutes and sometimes not. When we disrespect paras by, by not paying them enough and considering their positions as revolving door positions, the classroom loses its stability. Working with the special education students in BEEP requires the development of a specialized skill set. Our paras are trained by teachers and therapists, by in-service, and by courses. Losing dedicated paras because of salary directly impacts our students' learning and functioning as it takes new staff months to come up to speed developing the specialized skills our kids need to access the curriculum.
30 seconds.
This is not BEEP, this is not daycare or simply free play. This is a well-coordinated learning environment within which our paraprofessionals provide a solid foundation and stability for our students. It is time to increase their pay to a living wage. They deserve this and more for all they do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Daniel DeBowie, and then Kate Bowden.
Hi, I'm Dan DeBowie, and I'd like to thank everybody at home for staying tuned in here. With the forgiveness of the crowd, I'd like to actually thank Chairman Wolf Ditko for two things. One is the data that we've finally seen tonight. And I'd actually like to thank the entire school committee for showing that stuff tonight. That was very helpful for all the parents. I am a Brookline parent. My daughter will be going into kindergarten next year. I'm a Brookline homeowner, and I'm also a psychiatrist, so I'm not used to actually speaking this much in public. You know, I have bad news for everybody at home and here. This has been a tough week, as Chairman Wolf Ditko has alluded to. And really, the question now is, what do we do? What do we do when the empathy that we're gonna get at the federal level is inadequate or even backwards? What are we gonna do when we actually face the fact that we live in a state that's amazingly progressive, but who also has some members of government at the top, without dinging any particular political party, that provide minimal empathy in their governance? What we do as a diverse community, what we have to do is hard work. We have to be the ones to be progressive if the higher levels of government will not be. And I am shocked and saddened to see these numbers that are supposedly wonderfully generous offers being lower than what I pay my babysitter per hour. That is unacceptable! So, I realize that money does not grow on trees, but I think that it is irresponsible governance verging on the worst of, again, not to ding any political party, what we have seen in the last thirty-six years at the federal level to say, "Well, we don't have enough money, so we can't pay the people." So what does that teach our kids? It teaches our kids that the people who work for you, well, you know, they kind of provide services. Is that going to raise them to be voters who are gonna vote for progressive policies? Or is it going to leave them further in their bubble? And believe me, in this town, I'm hardly Daddy Warbucks compared to some people, but I recognize that part of the reason that we can be progressive is that we're also rather affluent, or at least a sizable chunk of us are.
Thirty seconds.
If we can't do it, who's going to do it? If we can't provide this example, how are we supposed to go forward to other communities and say, "The federal government needs to change again"? We can't do that. So I'd like everyone at home to check out BrooklineParents.org, where there are other, perhaps, less exercised parents working with me to look at, well, what could we spend money on? What could we cut back on? And if under the new government at the top, the race to the top's gonna become the race to the bottom, then maybe we need to relook at some of these tests that are associated with federal initiatives so that we don't end up polluting our otherwise progressive mindset any further. And we have money to pay the people who work with our children.
We're over time, thank you. Thank you. And then Kathy Stahl.
I'm Kate Bowden, am I next? Okay, great, thanks. I'm a former Brookline Public School student, parent of Brookline Public School students who are out of the house and hopefully becoming adults. And my partner is a teacher of almost twenty years in the system. So I really almost didn't want to speak because I'm so impressed and humbled by the speakers who came before me, and I just thank you all so much. And thanks, it's great to see so many people here tonight. I guess very shortly I'm gonna say I support the paraprofessionals, obviously. That's why we're here, that's why this is ongoing. And the union position on the contract, I think I also very much want to say I support. This is a budget issue, and budget issues are about choices, we all know that. No one's hands are tied. When you have a budget, you have choices. And what we're really asking as a community, I'm not a teacher, I'm not a para, I'm a resident of Brookline and a parent, and I really care about this. And what you're hearing from us and all the people out there with yard signs and everything is, make different choices, please. Finally, I'm not gonna go on because other people can and have spoken much more eloquently about how important it is. I just do feel, having sat here for two hours now, that I have to comment on your process. I felt the process tonight was unnecessarily rigid and inflexible. I felt repeatedly patronized sitting out there in the audience. It was really shocking. I think I felt your comments about being respectful of the process felt false and as if what you were really trying to do was control this process. It's really hard to feel comfortable with you and like we can possibly work together with you when that's the feeling I have sitting in the audience. And I would very much encourage you to think about your process and how you want to work with this town and these teachers and the paraprofessionals and everybody else moving forward, because this feels really bad. It doesn't feel like it's working. It doesn't feel like we can progress. Now we're moving into fact-finding. It feels dreadful. It feels divided, divisive, and extremely painful. We need to move past this. We have to get a new school built. We have to pass an override, or two, or I don't know how many. We have to be able to work with you in confidence and comfort. We have to be able to feel like all of us are gonna be able to pick up our phones and knock on our neighbors' doors happily and enthusiastically. And it's a huge effort, I've gone through it twice in this town. It is not easy. And it's really hard when it feels like it feels right now in our town. And when I sit in a meeting and it feels like this, I'm just crushed. And all I can say is, you know, I support these guys. I don't want to hear people being personally insulted in a public meeting. It's just not right. And I, I, I'm not gonna say anymore, except I hope that we can move on, make some different choices, get a good, fair contract, pay our paras better, and move on to the next challenges that we have to face on our town to maintain a great town and a great school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowden. Kathy Stahl? Kathy Stahl? And then next is Melissa Castro.
Okay. I'm Kathy Stahl, and this is my tenth year in Brookline. My first two years... Sorry, I'm usually really loud. My tenth year in Brookline, my first two years, I was a paraprofessional at Runcle, and then I started teaching at Runcle, and I love Brookline, and I love my paras. So we, group of us, are here speaking on behalf of the RISE paraprofessionals because most of them can't be here because they're working their second and third jobs in order to afford rent, grocery, school loans, and much more. The RISE program provides support to students in our district who are diagnosed with autism and need supports beyond general education. Our program relies on the support of our paraprofessionals. Many of the students in the program need one-to-one support in order to access the inclusion classrooms, develop social pragmatic skills, engage in conversation, and maintain safety throughout the day. Our students require a high level of one-to-one instruction with immediate reinforcement of correct responses and data collection across all areas of the school day, all of which are primarily the responsibilities of the paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals exist with daily living skills each day, including toileting, eating, feeding, dressing, undressing, tooth brushing, hand washing, and simple meal prep. Many of the students in the program engage in self-injurious and/or aggressive behaviors, and our paraprofessionals are on the front lines dealing with hits, kicks, scratches, bites, hair pulls, spitting, and environmental destruction. Our paras currently get paid an hourly rate comparable to what high school students make in part-time jobs, yet many of them have college degrees in education, master's degrees, and many of them are licensed teachers. For the past several years, we've had significant challenges hiring new paras because of the lack of a competitive and respectful wage. Potential paras have declined offers for reasons like, "I won't be able to pay my mortgage. I will need multiple other jobs in order to afford rent and my graduate program, but then when do I go to class and complete my homework? And I will not be able to afford childcare or feeding my family." They work six and a half hours a day hidden in substantially separate classrooms, spending their days working tirelessly to help our neediest students succeed and reach their potentials. They are underappreciated, they often feel invisible and unrecognized. They are what makes the RISE program successful. They are why our students meet their IEP goals, learn to converse with peers, make friends, and grow into contributing members of our community. Families of children diagnosed with autism move into Brookline in order to access the RISE program.
Thirty seconds.
Without our RISE program, paraprofessionals, our program would fail, failing our families and failing our students. So in conclusion, we, as RISE teachers, could not do our jobs without them.
Thank you.
My name's Melissa Castro, and this is my second year in the RISE program. And before that, I was a para for many years, two years in Brookline. To quote some of our paras, "I'm not asking for much, I'm just asking for enough to live."
I made more at my high school job, and I now have a master's degree in education.
I want to continue to do what I love, and it disappoints me that I may not be able to return in the near future because I can't afford to work at this wage.
We are so thankful for the supportive teachers. I feel as though we are seen by admin as just table wipers and not as someone who has to actually implement and adapt the curriculum on the fly much of the time.
I consider in many ways a privilege to work one-on-one with some of the neediest students and to have the support of a talented, committed, and collaborative staff. It gives me a huge sense of pride and responsibility. However, it angers and disturbs me that while we are on the front lines, we are also the most vulnerable and undercompensated. I worry about not being able to afford my union dues much longer or possibly needing to give up my apartment which permits me to commute to Runcle.
Despite it being a support role, I feel like an integral and valued part of the school community. My main reason for staying is the sense of respect I have from teachers and faculty despite it not being reflected in the compensation.
When I work two jobs for the public schools of Brookline in a physically and emotionally demanding position, I don't believe it's asking too much to be able to afford to live in a safe neighborhood that is a reasonable distance from work. I don't believe it is asking too much to not have to choose between buying groceries and paying my health bills. Please consider the fact that under the current conditions, as a college-educated person, I am making a salary that puts me in a position to qualify for food stamps and affordable housing.
I love my job, I love the children I work with, and I love the teachers and other faculty who are so supportive. But it's hard to feel appreciated for the hard work we do every day when we don't get treated like professionals or like we even matter by the people higher up.
Many of our students have regressive autism, meaning they typically develop the first few years developing language and social skills only to have their voices taken away from them. As one-to-ones, we act as an advocate, surrogate voice, and communication model for our students. How can we be a voice for our students when our own voices are not being heard? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jerry Bell? Jerry Bell? And next will be Kirsten Alper.
My name's Jerry Bell, and I've taught here for twenty-four years. I teach at the Runcle School. I've taught at least two of the parents on the school committee. The special education budget in this town is enormous. That's no surprise to any of us. Trained paraprofessionals save the town millions of dollars by keeping children who would otherwise require out-of-district placement in our schools. Paraprofessionals enable Brookline to work at achieving our core value of providing educational equity to all students. And yet, the town of Brookline refuses, and in fact, has really refused, based on what I've heard tonight, to negotiate a livable wage for those who work with the most needy and vulnerable of our students. These are choices that have been made. Our paraprofessionals are hourly workers and treated as such. And yet, the town of Brookline expects them to behave as professionals, and they do. Here in part is what they do on a daily basis. For some, the day begins and ends at buses and vans with their students. It's paraprofessionals that help these students transition to their classes for the day. Some run social groups, some run lunch groups, some wear protective shin guards, bite guards, and denim jackets to protect themselves during student outbursts. Some tend to the needs of nonverbal students and help them navigate the school culture. Some tend to the toiletry needs of their students. Paraprofessionals run or help run programs for students every day related to ELA, math, social studies, science, and communications. They go out to recess each day. They help students learn strategies to regulate how they behave in school and social settings. When there are physical or emotional outbursts, it is these highly skilled professionals who calm our students, prevent them from hurting themselves, and help them reintegrate back into the classroom. There are times when these outbursts cause physical harm to our paraprofessionals. And yet, the town has refused to negotiate with our union for a livable wage for our paraprofessionals. I'm not gonna read about the money because people have spoken to it, but what I do want to say is that a livable wage in Brookline is twenty-eight thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. The most amount...
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry.
Thirty seconds.
The most amount of money that someone can make at the top of the scale here is twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. The top of the scale in Newton is forty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. As it stands right now, Brookline is far from giving our paraprofessionals the competitive salary they deserve. We, the teachers of Brookline, cannot in good conscience let this happen, and neither should any of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Alper, and then after that, Susan Gold.
My name's Kirsten Alper, I'm a teacher at Lawrence School, but I'm actually speaking on behalf of another teacher who's a CLC teacher at Lawrence. And so these are her words. My classroom provides support to students with special needs who are in individualized education plans. In order for many of the goals of these students' IEPs to be met, oops, sorry, paraprofessionals are required in the general education setting and in my classroom. Currently, I manage and supervise five paraprofessionals, which is representative of the levels of the need in my students and not the numbers. One of my new paras quit in October. She had... And she's actually here tonight. She had done a stellar job in the classroom, working with my students, developing trust and rapport, and collaborating with all teachers. She was an asset to the classroom, but was transparent with all of us that she couldn't afford to live, eat, or pay her rent. To add to that, another one of my highly valued paras is in the same dilemma and is experiencing a significant amount of stress as well. I see many problems with my student paraprofessionals getting paid this shameful wage. I've seen the direct result of paraprofessionals being irreplaceable for the last month. My students, who are the most at risk, have had four separate guest teachers this month who they have had to adapt to each week. One student told me, "This is confusing, and it was hard to adjust to these guest teachers." General education teachers have had to adapt to this pressure as well. These guest teachers are getting paid higher wage than the paraprofessionals in Brookline. I've been encouraged to ask these teachers if they would like to work in my classroom as a paraprofessional, knowing they would adopt a reduction in salary. None of them have accepted the offer. The paraprofessional position is critical in order for my students to make progress in Brookline. It's not an easy job as it requires skills and intuition while following the same cohort of students throughout the day. They provide academic, social, behavioral, and emotional support to individual students with varying and complex needs. It requires the ability to make on-the-spot decisions when there is a crisis as well as the ability not to take students' behavior personally. It requires creativity to modify work and provide accommodations. Paraprofessionals ensure that students will be successful in Brookline. It's hard, hard work, I know, because I was one in this town. But the wage they receive in Brookline is not livable.
Thirty seconds.
That's in capital letters. It's embarrassing, and it is communicating that paraprofessionals have no valuable and that they are replaceable. Is that what we want for our special educators in Brookline? A town that is revered for its special education program and resources? As it stands, special education in Brookline is no longer living up to its reputation, and that needs to change. To put it more bluntly, students on IEPs, which are legal documents, are not making effective progress because they have to adapt to new guest teachers each time a paraprofessional leaves.
We're past time.
Okay. I think I'll stop there then.
Thank you so much. Susan Gold? And then Jane Leo will be next.
Hi, my name is Susan Gold. I'm a parent in Brookline and a homeowner for a very long time. And my daughter Sophia has gone through BEEP and through Runcle, and she's in eighth grade now. And I made a commitment to her, because we're all tired of not resolving these issues, that she will in fact go to... that she will in fact go to her New York City trip with the eighth graders with her teachers, not her parents, which she doesn't want, and that we need to resolve this. We have big issues as a community to resolve. You know that more than anyone about the overcrowding about the high school. So I have two asks, and one is about community, and one is about creative problem solving. From a community perspective, the ask is for everyone here. This week was a painful week for all of us in the elections. We need to change the dialogue here. We are happy to have Andrew Bott. I think there's, I'm optimistic that he's going to bring a level of collaboration that we haven't seen from a superintendent, and we need to work as a community. That's why we're here, all here in Brookline. It's for wonderful teachers, it's for parents, it's for educators all teaming together. So, the two asks are that we somehow find a way to be kinder and lower the volume on this, but we really look to creative problem solving. I have to say, I'm disappointed that I haven't seen a benchmark that looks at what our paras' salary is, and what it is against the 14 communities that we looked at for the people of color and all those issues with that that are important, that we look at attrition, and what we're paying in attrition if we're losing a lot of paras because they can't afford to live here. And I think we need to be brave again. I think we need to be brave as a community when we chose to go through a K-8 model and stick with that model because we knew it was good for our children. If we don't have a budget that can let us go beyond 2% to make a salary scale that we believe is the right salary scale for our paras, then we need to go to the selectmen, and we need to team together with parents and the community to do that and make that case that we have the priorities we should have as a community in Brookline, and we value education. That should be our priority. So, I ask us for creative problem solving. I ask us to kind of be kind to each other. I know the school committee works hard, they're not paid, they represent us as a community, they're trying to solve our problems, so they deserve our respect, just like our teachers deserve their respect in our paras. So I really hope we will be brave enough to benchmark that and make a choice of where we stand as a community in paying the people who are paras. I have a second ask. I really looked into this issue, and I really think we should not be holding teachers to vote on an agreement when their colleagues, their teammates, that has not been resolved. We teach our children that. And I have to say, I think it's the right thing. So, I ask that we not pursue that, because let's just try and resolve this and get back to what this community does really well, which is value education and value of collective dialogue and collaboration, and that's what we all really need. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jane Leo, and then Bob Thomas.
Hi, my name is Jane Leo. I teach first grade at the Heath School. I also happen to be a member of the negotiating team for the BU, and I've been teaching in Brookline for 15 years. So I've witnessed the staggering increase in class size. I've also seen the increase in students with special needs, specifically those who present with behavioral challenges, in the regular ed classroom. And I want to be clear, it's my belief that kids who present with behavioral challenges and kids with special needs belong in our schools. That's why I teach in a public school. And we, as a public school system, have a responsibility to teach inclusively. That means everyone, including those with learning differences, get a free and equal education. So what does a responsible school district do in order to meet the needs of an increasingly diversified learning population? If there are a significant number of kids with identified behavioral needs in a grade, they create a co-taught inclusion model classroom. So let's say you have four second-grade classes, you create one co-taught inclusion classroom for that grade, and you place the children with the identified needs in that class. Now, in a co-taught inclusion model, you've got a regular ed teacher like myself, you've got a special ed teacher, and then in addition, you've got two additional paras. Everybody, all four educators share the responsibility for all the children in that class, including the kids with the IEPs and the other, all the children. And this is the golden standard of inclusive education, and it's used widely across districts in Massachusetts, Framingham, Southbridge, Dartmouth, to name a few. And I can think of four cohorts of children at Heath alone that should have been taught with this co-taught inclusion method. And I know there are two years across the district who could name as many in their own schools. And so what's a reputable district like Brookline's solution to this increase in children with behavioral challenges? If you're lucky, you might get a para, one para. You might get one para to go running after a kid who's just bolted from the classroom. You might get one para who's there to receive the kicks, the punches, hits from the latest child meltdown. You might get one para who's separating student X from student Y. You might get one para to de-escalate the latest conflict unfolding between two students.
Thirty seconds.
You might get one para who's taking your student for a break when they're overwhelmed by the other 23 kids in your class, and you better believe your students are learning something, but I guarantee you, it's not what you had in your lesson plan. And it's certainly not the quality of education that a proud and reputable district like Brookline ought to provide. And that's why it's just plain wrong that we expect our paras to shoulder the burden of this increase in students with behavioral needs. It's unreasonable that we expect our paras to do the work of two, maybe even three teachers. It's unethical that it has become business-as-usual in Brookline to entrust parents with our most vulnerable students, our students who struggle the most, and deny them paid breaks, deny them a paid lunch, and then pay them a starting salary that's not even close to $20,000 a year.
We're way over time.
That's why it kills me when I see the school committee spend overland money on stuff that will make no difference at all in the day-to-day learning environment of our students. Like data collection positions! Last year, they spent $600,000! Do you know how many paras you could buy with that?
Ms. Leo, we're way over time.
And then give them the respectful salary they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob Thomas. And then, and then Creighton Jones.
Hi, my name is Bob Thomas. I'm a teacher at Driscoll School. Thanks for this opportunity to talk. I'm here just speaking to fulfill a promise to paraprofessional Mike DeSilva, who is an amazing professional working in the kindergarten classroom. His teacher says she could not come close to meeting the academic, emotional, and social needs of her students without Mike's work. So Mike says, hello, and he couldn't be here tonight is why I'm reading this for him, but Mike says, "Hello, let me just start by saying that this is my second year working in Brookline, and it's been a good experience so far. I wake up each morning excited to come to school. I enjoy being able to work with the children every day and love the staff that surrounds me. However, it's been very hard for me to make ends meet with the paraprofessional salary. I work another job full-time to make ends meet, which is why I was not able to attend this meeting. I understand that money does not grow on trees, but the salary that I have is simply not enough compensation for the job that I do. A new agreement on wages for professionals in Brookline would make a huge difference to not only myself, but all the paras in Brookline who work hard in order to make living wages, a living wage. Better compensation would allow myself to cut down on the hours on my second job. I'd love to be able to give 100% of my energy to the children that I teach every day. If you truly care about education of the children in Brookline, you'll make the right choice and give myself, as well as the rest of the hard-working professionals in Brookline, what we deserve. Thank you for your time."
Thank you so much. Creighton Jones. Thank you. And then Anal Hochberg will be next.
Evening, everybody. My name is Creighton Jones. I work for Driscoll School. It's my first couple months down here in the good old state of Massachusetts. I'm originally from Burlington, Vermont. I was a para there for years, as well as an internal building sub. And let's have at it, this is for the paras. What is the worth of an educator? Paraprofessionals and teachers alike, both educators, what sets them apart? What makes one worth more than the other? Why in one town is a pay raise given as an act of appreciation for their paraprofessionals and another? This is realized by educators who approach the town, and the town in turn turns a blind eye to it and shrugs it off. Why is that? The title "para educator," the custodian of educators, is a thankless job. That once accepted, little is given to you and much is expected. On my first day of orientation, the room was full of brand-new paraprofessionals. Why is that? Is it because so little is given for such a high, demanding job? And yet, if this is known, why is it accepted and okay? A job that you're praised for at times and told that by teachers themselves, they could never do what you do day in and day out, and they don't see how you do it. And yet, knowing this, you're still expected to come into work, be physically and mentally prepared, have your personal and financial affairs in order, so that you can start the day without any worries. But how can you do that with that second or third job? Maybe you're also a student on top of all that, so that maybe you can reach that next tier of peer grade, so that maybe you can make 50 cents to a dollar more, and maybe not have to work that third job, and be expected to come into work and do it all again. That's the life of a para outside of school. Let's talk about inside of school. Some paras are classroom paras, the teacher's right-hand, so much so I've seen teachers struggle throughout their day when one is not present. This is because they allow the teachers extra time to prep for class and focus on a student's education, and on the other end, make preparations for the teacher while he or she is teaching, while also providing assistance to students who need it during class time, like a secondary teacher.
Twenty seconds.
Is this educator not worth what we're asking for? Because I'm only given 20 seconds, so I'm going to skip ahead. Is this kind of dedication worth what we're asking for? Are your children, our students, worth that kind of attention and care? This isn't just a job for most of us. It's a career, it's a passion, it's the reason why students are excited to learn, the reason why students might tell their parents about educators that aren't even their own. Paraprofessionals come with a vast array of knowledge, from life experiences to education or both. Is 10 years of experience worth the same as a bachelor's degree in an unrelated field? And like I know some of our paras have, and if the district is rewarding in paying their employees for the education they may have, why aren't paras who do have a master's degree in special education paid the same as their classroom teacher counterparts? So after all this, and everyone has spoken here this evening, you now know a fraction of what we do, and I ask you, are we worth what we ask for? And I leave you with this, Brookline.
We're four minutes.
I leave you this right here. What would you do if you didn't have these butlers of education?
Sir, we're past four minutes.
These fine men and women who so proudly call themselves paraprofessionals and are there every day for the children of Brookline, whether individually, in groups, or in classrooms, what would you do?
Thank you very much. Anal Hochberg. And then Pam Palmucci. Pam Hochberg? Oh, sorry, Anal Hochberg? No, okay, Pam Palmucci? Okay, Becca... Oh, oh, sorry, great, thank you. And then next is Becca Waferd, Lawrence para. Do I have that? Okay, okay.
Hi, good evening. First of all, I just want to thank all the paras. I'm just so impressed and inspired by your stories and your commitment, and also the prior speaker. It's just such a moving evening. My name is Pam Palmucci, and I have two daughters at the high school and one son at Heath Elementary. And I want to emphasize that all three of my children and every student in this system has been helped by a paraprofessional, whether directly or indirectly. I realize I only have a few minutes to talk, so for the sake of time, I will talk about my 12-year-old son, who is a current seventh grader at Heath. 10 years ago, my son was diagnosed with a form of autism. He was essentially nonverbal, and despite my best efforts, I was losing hope, and terrified I was losing him. At the age of three, he entered BEEP and was placed in a significant separate classroom for ASD children, where there was a one-to-one aide for each young child. Each day, these amazing paraprofessionals would greet him like they were meeting a movie star. Their affect, energy, care, compassion, and above all, patience encouraged him to move from his own world into ours. These paras were my own superstars. As my son slowly began to interact with his teachers, his specialists, his family, and over time, his words started to come out. It was my biggest dream that I would one day hear my son speak, and his paras, Rachel, Lauren, Sheila, Kelly, Katie, and Liz cheered him on every step of the way, all the way into full inclusion two years later with aide support at Heath. It is at Heath where his aides have witnessed him make his first friends, build his first snowman, write his first book, land his first starring role in a play, get elected to student council. I could go on and on. One of his aides even went out of her way to make him Calvin and Hobbes cupcakes for his sixth birthday. She's here tonight, since this is one of his favorite books and literary characters. Another aide went home and made a cutout of a shoe, laminated it, put shoelaces in, so he could learn how to tie his own shoe without asking for help. There are so many beautiful examples I could recount right now, but for the sake of time, I move on. Being a para is more than a job to this exemplary group of people here in Brookline. It is a journey. It's the beginning of a special, safe, and trusting relationship between a student and their designated go-to person, and you have to witness it to appreciate and understand what a critical role these paras have in the classroom and their connection to the students they help each day. It can be transformed. Paras are often the lifeline between a student and his or her teacher and peers. Their days are not easy. Much of the time, they are consoling students who are frustrated, sad, anxious, and friendless. These devoted individuals are people whose job it is to care for the most vulnerable students in our district, and yet they are treated by you as being insignificant, replaceable, removable. I believe it is your job, members of our school committee, to recognize these paras, observe them in action, appreciate them, celebrate them, and pay them a respectable amount. Otherwise, I fear we will lose the heart and soul of our special education team in Brookline. And the key word here is "special." It takes a special person to care for a person who has special needs.
We're at time.
And cannot put a value on that.
Thank you. Becca, if you can tell us your last name. And next will be Susan Below? That pronounced right.
Hi, my name is Becca. I worked at the Lawrence School for not that long, because I worked for Newton Public Schools for two and a half years as a paraprofessional, and I came to Brookline, and I loved the job. It's one of the best schools I've ever worked for, and I quit because I will not be treated this way. I will not be treated with disrespect anymore. I am standing up for all paras and saying, "This is not the way we treat people." Because I could not, I did not have money for food, for rent, for $19,000 in student loans, are you kidding me? I was suffering, and the stress was too much, and I cannot work three or four jobs because I have PTSD, and it's too much for me. And I love my students, and it broke my heart to leave them. I tried to make it work. I cried in my supervisor's office, but I could not make it work. I love what I do, but I cannot do it anymore. You, all of you, who have prevented a better wage, should feel ashamed, because we cannot afford the benefits, these benefits that you say you give us, on the salary that we are given. I cannot afford health insurance. That is shameful. And this dialogue is not a respectful dialogue. This feels like an abusive relationship when you try to silence our voices, and I know what that sounds like, because I am a survivor of domestic violence, and that is not okay to silence our voices. You must treat us with respect, and I left because I finally learned how to respect myself. And I will stand up for all of us and say, "Treat us with respect." Is that not what we teach our students? We teach them compassion and dignity and respect, and how to accept people who are different from each other. It's just heartbreaking that you cannot treat people with respect. And so I left, and it was one of the hardest decisions I've ever made in my life. One of the classroom teachers I worked with is here, and it was hard to say goodbye to her, and it was harder even to say goodbye to my students, and it was harder even still that I could not explain to them why I was leaving, because I could not afford to live anymore. And it was frightening. I live in Brookline, and I cannot afford to both live and work here. And it is, you guys should be so ashamed, because we are suffering. Because we are suffering. We are suffering. What are you going to do about it? More, now more than ever, we need respect and caring and not hate and not silencing. You need to listen to our voices. You need to make change. I have so much hope because of all of you here, because you are standing up for us and you are saying, there is still work to be done. There is hope that we can change the world, and we will not let anyone silence us.
We're at time.
There is hope. We can do this. We will stand and fight. We will not back down.
Thank you very much. Susan Below. Susan Below, do I have that pronounced right? Thank you. And then the last person will be Elizabeth Mishka, unless there's anybody else who wishes to speak, but you have three minutes.
Alrighty. I've made a few notes while we're sitting here, but thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I am Janice McEwen. It's my third year in Brookline as a paraprofessional. I'm a RISE para at Runcle Now, but I have been a K-1 classroom para also. And I want to stress that because both positions have challenging parts of the job. As a K-1 classroom para, with children that young, there are often social and emotional needs that have not been recognized or addressed. Certainly, they're not on an IEP yet. They are in these classrooms. The teachers need us. This is a classroom para position. I love my job. We are educators, we are professionals. I recently looked up "para," as recently as sitting over there. From the Greek, it means "by one side." I am proud to work side by side with my teachers at Runcle. It makes me crazy that we are nickelled and dimed with our pay. To use Dr. Tatum's language from the other day, we are in the picture, but often feel I, I, I easily spend at least thirty minutes every day, either before or after school, and almost always while I'm grabbing fifteen minutes to eat my lunch, again, as both a RISE para and a K-1 classroom para. I value spending that time, especially at lunch, with my classroom teachers, so we can talk about our students. Which one might need special assistance in math later on that day? Which one might be having an emotionally rough day or week? In the morning before students arrive or at the end of the day, I also want to spend time to make notes, get organized for the next day. By making this time, especially the time to exchange observations and questions, ideas with the classroom teacher, I am ensuring that I am doing everything I can do to support the students in my classroom. I could not do my job as a professional without this time. I want to close, going back to, paraprofessionals are educators. I'm shaking. Paraprofessionals are educators, we are professionals. Please pay us fairly for the important work that we do.
Thank you so much. Elizabeth Mishka. Is Elizabeth here? Okay, that's all we have signed up to speak. Is there anybody else who wishes to make public comments? Please just come up to the microphone and tell us your name.
Hi, Courtney Kelty. I work for BEEP. I have worked at Driscoll School, I have worked at Putterham Circle, and I'm currently at BEEP on Beacon, as well as being a coordinator for kindergarten after-school program at Pierce School. I've been in Brookline for five years. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but seeing all of you, parents, teachers I have worked with, and I know at every school I've worked at, it was just so empowering to see you all come up here and talk, and it reminded me, my parents are social workers, and I know that's how I ended up in this field, working with kids, and my dad would always say that, it's not a job, it's a vocation. You are born to do it. And I was not going to come back to my job this year because I could not afford it. I, tonight, called out of work. I was supposed to go babysit where I'd make seventy-five dollars, more than I would make at BEEP this morning. Seventy-five dollars is out of my pocket because I needed to be here with all of you, because this is not right. I have worked in special education, I work in after-school, early education, I have had children that were told they were never going to be able to walk, take their first steps with me. I had a parent who I worked with three years ago know that at eleven o'clock on a Friday night, three weeks ago, she could call me and tell me that her son got diagnosed with something that he will never be on his own for, she will be with him for the rest of his life. And she knew that she could call me at eleven o'clock, and I would answer the phone to talk to her, because that is how much that child means to me. And it is just so hurtful to wake up at five o'clock every morning, because I pulled my back three years ago at work, and I need to wake up at 5:00 AM so I can stretch out because I'm taking kids out of their car every day, I'm picking them up and helping them into the building, I'm holding them, because they need someone to hug them, because they are just having a hard day, especially this week. And it just hurts me so much to have to be up here and explain myself to you, because I'm working three jobs to even afford to be here, and I just had to come back this year for those kids, and that's all. I have to say, thank you all for what you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Cory. I work in the RISE program at Runcle. I'm a para there, and I just want to say that I have another friend who worked in another school, and she's the one who told me to come to Brookline. She says, Brookline is the best school system ever, and you'll love it there. And I love it there, and I love working under my teachers, because they don't treat us as paras. They treat us as equals, and they call us all teachers. And everyone as a para is just a teacher. And she says you'll love it, I do love it, but the pay, mm, not good. And I know you've been hearing this a lot, and I know you guys are all disgusted about us talking about the pay so much, but I have a quest for you. And I'm calling it a quest because I know you guys won't be able to do it. Live in our shoes, live in our feet, and take what we make, and have you guys try to live what we live off of for a month, and then come back onto the table and decide what you want.
Thank you. Bob Miller.
Hi, my name is Bob Miller. I'm a Brookline resident and a, uh, teacher at Heath School, and I'm also on the negotiating team. And I didn't plan to speak, but I have a couple of things that I feel like I need to say. One is that I want to reiterate what the last person said. I think that Brookline is an amazing, amazing community, and the parents and the teachers and the people that have come out tonight and have spoken really make an impact on me. And I think we can all say that that's why we love teaching in Brookline, the students, the parents, the community, the town is a wonderful place. There are a couple of things, as a member of the negotiating team, that I wanted to point out. One is, and probably even the negotiators here don't know this, because we've been in mediation, and a lot of the conversation is not direct, but when the teachers finally decided that they were going to agree to the document or the proposal or whatever that's been agreed to, one of the things that was a real problem for us was that the town wanted the teachers and the staff to work an extra day, but didn't want to pay us our daily rate. And we felt that it was so important to maintain our dignity that we would not work on the cheap, and that we would donate a day to the town, because it was so important to them to have that day, that we were donating that. And one of the conversations that went on in the room was, this will be some money that we can get for the paras. And there is such a commitment and such a love, and I think you've seen it tonight, on the part of teachers, for the job that the paras do. And to see them being offered two percent, which is not even keeping up with the latest statistics that I've been told have come out for the Boston area, for what is the increase in, in living and wages, to me, doesn't speak to closing the gap. And the other piece that I want to talk about, because this is something that's particularly frustrating for me as someone who worked very hard on the override, there are times where we've been told, there's nothing we can do, that's what the override provided.
Thirty seconds.
And when I, thank you. When I brought that up to the negotiating team, I was told, well, that's, that's what the override said. Well, I've looked, there was, the override study report was a hundred and thirty pages. There are over twenty documents listed on the town website that are listed as documents for the override. And when I asked the negotiating team, do you really think that everybody in town, before they voted, read that? I was told, it was there. You know, the people of the town expect you to do the right thing, and I think somebody earlier said, a budget is choices. If it's needed, if it's necessary, and if it's the right thing to do, find the money.
Thank you. Scott Murphy, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Scott Murphy. I'm a twenty-two-year resident of Brookline, I'm a native son of Chicago, and a graduate of Chicago Public Schools. A week ago this morning, much of my town woke up, euphoric and excited and just ecstatic, so I'm hungover, and there were, among the craziest statements made was, a native son of Brookline, Theo Epstein, for president in 2020, which is before his contract extension expires. One week later, that statement takes on a different meaning as we wake up Wednesday morning. I'm here to just follow up on housekeeping, and I spoke to this body from this podium twice last fall regarding annual conference, student conference for the Minority Student Achievement Network, which a contingent didn't go out for the first time in five years. I understand one did go out last month. This year's was in Chapel Hill at North Carolina's campus, and I don't know who was part of it. I think the town can use a little good news. I know you have much important business. I don't know when they'll get to speak to your body, but I'm actually anxiously awaiting that. I think it relates directly to the achievement gap and closing that and the opportunities for those children. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just state your name.
Hi, my name's Allison Bear. Hi, my name's Allison Bear, and I'm a teacher in the Adaptive Learning Center at Lincoln. And prior to that, I was at the high school in the community-based classroom as a teacher as well, and a paraprofessional in BEEP a while back. This is my fly, and I just wanted to speak out from the two paraprofessionals in my classroom, Dan and Karen, who couldn't be here, like many others, because they both had other jobs they needed to attend to after-school hours. I could not do my job without Karen and Dan. They are two of the most unbelievable teachers I know and people I know. The dedication that they come into school with every single day, picking the kids up off the bus, and as you've heard throughout this, teaching, adapting, modifying, bringing kids to the bathroom, feeding, going to regular ed, dealing with behavioral issues, everything you can imagine and beyond, and taking over when I'm not there at the meetings I need to go to. So several hours a week, I'm not in the classroom, and they are the lead teacher at that time. I just couldn't do without them. The respect I have, I just, it's just not, it's not shown in what they're given, it's not dignified, and I just want more for them, because I want them to keep showing up, because I couldn't do this without them. I really, really couldn't, and I want them to come back next year, I want them to come back year after and beyond, and I wish they could be here tonight to tell their stories, but I really hope you can see this and try to make a change and think of creative ways to do this, because it's really, really important work they do. And just as a quick thing, I mean, the Adaptive Learning Center has the kids in the district with some of the most profound disabilities, and no doubt, they would leave this district and have to spend, you know, the cost of at least two paraprofessionals just to go out of district. So, I mean, think about that, and think about the fact that I make three times the amount of one of my paraprofessionals, three times the amount. So, I don't know. That's all I need to say, but I just wanted to say something for them. Thanks, bye.
Thank you so much. Just give us your name.
Good evening, my name is Bruce Mallory. First, I want to thank all of you for sitting here and listening to this. I'm a homeowner in Brookline. I am a parent in Brookline. I have three children. My oldest is a senior in college, my youngest is a sophomore at the high school. And I also happen to teach at Brookline High School. I've been teaching at Brookline High School since my oldest was born. I want to share with you two simple emotions. The first, as I'm sure you're aware, the, at the high school, the PTO organizes a staff appreciation breakfast, and I look forward to those breakfasts. There's a lot of food, it's a lot of good food, but I don't look forward to the breakfasts because of the food. I look forward to the breakfasts because of the respect and the appreciation that I Second emotion, this evening I showed up at 5:15, thinking that, after supporting my colleagues, my wife and I would go out for dinner. I don't know why, or what happened, but the expectation was, as it was. And I've been sitting here, and as I listened to the negotiating report, I felt that I was being shamed, and I felt that I was being insulted. The disrespect that I felt cannot be made up by any amount of food. My colleagues are merely asking for a contract that is respectful, and they are asking to be treated and negotiated with respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here who'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm a Brookline parent and homeowner, and some-
Is that your name?
Uh, my name is Mayon Sue. I have a daughter and son at the Heath School, and I actually left, and I came back because something that one of the teachers really struck home with me, and it was Ms. Leo, who said, is this status quo? I have one paraprofessional in my classroom. And it's beyond status quo and not, and the quality, it's, and it's beyond the disrespect. But there's laws in place, civil rights laws, that I feel as a parent, you're, by not giving our dedicated staff the resources they need by law to ensure that every child has access to a free and appropriate education, I really feel that you are setting them up for failure to be noncompliant with the law. That is very serious, and it's something to take very seriously. And I, I wanted to emphasize that point. Are you, by not having the proper support on the front lines, are you setting up these very dedicated people for noncompliance, which is very serious? And it's something to really think hard about. And you're putting them in a very difficult position.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charles Donnelly from Lawrence School. This is not how I normally dress. I'm coming back from thirty hours of overnight field trip with the students, and yet it was important to stay. It was important to stay here, to talk, to show support, and to let them know that we are on their side. Bruce talked about, like, wanting to go out to dinner with his wife. I really want to get back to my family, whom I haven't seen since Wednesday morning, which was a little traumatic. Nights like this, I feel like, you know, we'll stop, we'll get some takeout or whatever. And I contrast that with a colleague of mine, a paraprofessional, whom another colleague recently noticed wasn't eating. She didn't have money for groceries this month, because the next job hadn't kicked in. So as teachers, we did a whip around and bought a grocery cart. And that's pretty shameful, that we have to do that, that that's not something that the system does. We did it, because that's who we are, and that's who all of these people are. I really hope the next time you have takeout, you go to a restaurant, you look at that and you think about your food, and think about those who don't have their food. I'd also like to actually say one thing in support of my Unit B colleagues. And we haven't actually talked much about tonight, but my Unit B colleagues do an amazing amount of work. And all I can think about is there's a, an idea about a three-legged stool, and which leg is the most important. We'll remove one and you'll find out. There are the third leg, the paras are another, and this is why we're standing together. I'm sorry that you feel that waiting for six weeks is a little bit long. We feel like we've waited for over a year, and I think you can wait for a little bit longer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here wishing to speak? Mr. Curdehe?
Hi, my name is Jesse Curdehe. I'm a teacher at Driscoll, and I was not planning on speaking tonight, so this is off the cuff. I think we want to get back to the place where we are, where we feel like you are working with us. You have said in the past that we have the same goal in mind, doing right by our students. And what we have seen for the past two years, as we've been trying to negotiate with you, is that your focus is the bottom line. And we need you to change that. We come to work, our paras sacrifice hundreds or thousands of dollars annually, because they want to do the right thing. The bottom line for them is what's right for their students, for our students. We need you to see that the bottom line isn't just a salary. And that a living, a livable salary is a moral issue. And Brookline can do what's right here, and it really needs to. We need you to step up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Xiao Hu, and I go by Xia Li Tu. I'm a resident and a homeowner. And I wasn't planning to say this late, and also wasn't planning to speak here, but I just felt the urge. I think I, this is my first town hall meeting ever, and when I came here, one thing I felt very strongly was lack of respect for the teachers from the committee. And also, there was a lack of all the residents over there. I wonder if you work in this kind of environment, how do you make the teacher really inspired and be united between the two parties? And that was something I'm really worried about. And I really hope, sometimes it's not what you say, and it's how you say it. I think probably you need to change the attitude towards the teacher. And also, sometimes I feel you don't want to listen, you are working against them. So, that is really, really disconcerting, and that's all I want to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who'd like to say something? Okay. First of all, thank you all for your patience tonight. Thank you for allowing all of your colleagues to speak. I want to first apologize to our high school student, who was hoping to hear the high school presentation tonight. And so, we will catch him up on that later. I want, I apologize to anybody here who feels disrespected. That was certainly not our intention. Our intention was to take a 15-minute agenda item and turn it into an hour and a half, because this is really important, and I'm very sorry if you felt disrespected tonight. Everyone in this room has other- I would also like to apologize to the architects, who are an hour and a half, were waiting for us for an hour and a half. And I apologize to the high school leadership, who is waiting as well. But thank you all for coming. We know you have other places to be. We appreciate your time. I don't know if the architects are here, but, are they? Okay. So, I just want to ask the committee, we have two lengthy agenda items tonight. We have the ninth school presentation from the Jonathan Levy Architects. We also have a draft of the high school education plan. I think, I'm hoping we can at least scrap my 10-minute report, because nobody wants to hear me give a 10-minute report. But I guess I'd like to get a sense of the committee, if you all want to have both of these tonight. If you want to have both the ninth school presentation and the high school presentation, for their allotted 30 to 45 minutes. Whether you want to have each of them shorter, whether we should postpone one of them, I am, neither one of them, I don't think, has a, there actually is one set of votes we need to take, which we do need to do, but, but I'm open to suggestions, yeah.
So, I suggest that we delay the high school-
Education report?
Educational plan and give it full trip the next time. That would be my suggestion.
Education plan? The question, Helen was saying that we should delay the high school education plan report. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so the high school, is there, I mean, one thing, maybe if Anthony's here, we could just ask him really quick, or Andrew? Could you want us to ask, I mean, I just want to make sure there's nothing that you need our opinion on, our go-ahead on? Because we don't meet again until November 1st, September 1st. Or maybe just do an abbreviated version? Okay, so the overview, okay. All right, all right, so maybe just an abbreviated version of that, not the full presentation. Mr. Levy, Mr. Gray, thank you so much for your patience. We had important things to do. Not that you are not important as well, but we really appreciate your patience, and I apologize.
No need.
All right. Okay, we do still technically have a quorum, so we can start when you're ready, but, no, 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 I think they're all getting, like, M&amp;M's. Oh, Ben Lames. David? Why don't we just do the building committees? David? Hey, David, can we do building committees? Can we vote the building committees? I just want to keep moving while they're sending this out, so we don't lose time. All right, so we're going to come back in the session. Of course you do. I feel like that's, I feel like that's like bringing the umbrella so it doesn't rain. Mr. Pollak, do you want to introduce the notion of the proposed vote on the ninth school building committee, or no? Are we ready? Okay, so you guys, no, come on. Okay, ready? Shut up. Rebecca, Michael, Helen, Ben. Let's kick on. All right, who's introducing this? Um, are we, no, no, we're doing the Baldwin site. Mr. Pollak, are you introducing? Yeah. And sometimes they clip it, and then they'll just show this part, so. Why are you looking at me like that? Okay, okay.
All right, we're joined tonight by Jonathan Levy and Philip Gray from JLA, who are going to give us an update on their work that just begun on the next phase of the ninth school work, which is the feasibility phase, and looking now that we have a site specifically at Baldwin site. So, take it away.
Yes, thank you, David. It's good to be here. I'm going to spend just 10 minutes updating you and also giving you a preview of what we're doing. So, to date, we've completed what we call the site selection study, which concluded successfully with the designation of the Baldwin site. So, there are three phases of work that we're undertaking now. The first phase is the data collection and discovery phase. I'm trying to give you an overview of what we're working on and the kinds of things you could expect to be happening over the next several months, and also what kinds of decisions you're going to be asked to make. So, there are three, three phases of work that we're involved in now. One is data and collection, collection and discovery. Second is programming and visioning, and then thirdly is design. So, we've just received our notice to proceed mid-month, but- I'm going to hold this. We started work mid-month last month. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we've actually done to date and how we're planning the work going forward in terms of data collection and discovery. So, what does that involve primarily? It involves finding out more about the site. So, we did a lot of preliminary work in terms of understanding the three sites that we were looking at earlier. Now, we're really digging in to try to really fully understand. Fortunately, I was the architect 15 years ago for the Sewell Recreation Center and the Sewell site. So, we had a lot of, we had actually a treasure trove of information right in our office that we were able to discover that the town didn't have for some reason. So, we had the actual topographic survey, yeah, we had all that information. So, that was very useful, and I've already been sketching on it. It's been very helpful. So, we're doing, also, we're demolishing a building, so we need to find out about that building, the hazardous materials that it contains and so on. And then, a large part of our work is also going to be traffic, as we remember from the site selection study. One of the challenges of the site is traffic. So, on the right, you see our, the, you remember, there was, there's a discussion about, well, what are we really studying? Are we studying the immediate site and what's around it, but also there are outlying intersections? So, these are the outlying intersections that are being studied right now as we speak. There are traffic counts being done in preparation for actually a meeting that's coming up in a week and a half with the Traffic Commission, which is going to be an important meeting. David and Philip were at a meeting last night, where we heard a little bit more about how important that is. Second portion is visioning and programming. This is, for me, one of the most satisfying aspects of a project is, and especially in Brookline, meeting all the wonderful educators that you have here, that we have here. The ultimate goal of that is to create a space summary template. What we're looking for is to identify every room in the program, to give a, quantify the sizes of those rooms. the sizes of those rooms. And to understand also, on the right, you can see a space adjacency diagram, to understand the correct relationships between them. So, this is actually an interesting process because we're trying to both reflect the, a continuation of the eight schools that we already have and make sure there's continuity with them. But at the same time, as we've met with folks in town, we're hearing a very strong will to use this school as a way of incrementally understanding what the future will be as well. So, this is a school that has one foot in the continuity of the existing portfolio of schools, another foot in the future and trying to understand the future. So, towards that end, we've met with, in just a minute, I'll tell you more about who we've met with and what we've learned so far. And then finally, there's the design portion, which is going to start to unfold at the beginning of next month. So, as we had done the last time, we used the methodology of studying alternatives in order to tease out the possibilities and also to empower you in your decision-making so that you can understand, you know, comparatively what the potential, the same process that we went through in site selection, except now, we're looking at different potentials within that same site. So, what could that mean? That could mean different ways of covering the site. If it were a larger site, I'd be talking about different places to place the building. There really aren't different places to place the building. There are different shapes of buildings that pretty much cover the site. This is just giving you an example, these are examples in graphics that should give you a feeling for, on a previous project, also on a very tight site, the kinds of conceptual design alternatives that we do that are far more than building volumes and footprints. Now, we're actually looking at configurations of rooms and how those configurations of rooms are a manifestation of the educational vision that Superintendent Bott and his senior staff and the entire school system are bringing. And then, in order to compare those alternatives, and I expect there'll be three or four, again, this is from another project, but just giving you a sense of the kinds of drawings that will be produced, we'll have another decision matrix that will have, of course, very different criteria now, having to do with the specifics of floor plan arrangements and the utilitarian functional sustainability aspects of different ways of configuring buildings on the site. So, what have we done so far? We've had a pretty rigorous program of outreach to the school department. There have been one-on-one interviews, there have been focus groups, and there have been site visits. So, probably the most exciting for me was the two meetings that we've had with the curriculum coordinator, district-wide curriculum coordinators, really, really exciting meetings, brainstorming meetings. The first one, I mean, we didn't, we just walked into the room and we were just overwhelmed with a wave of enthusiasm and initiative and they had already taken the ball and run with it. They created a design thinking session among themselves so that they could understand what the issues were for the future of the school system. Some very interesting things came out of that. Of course, all of this is just raw material that we're going to vet through the decision-making process with you and with the superintendent. So, we had two staff coordination meetings with the curriculum coordinators. We've been also meeting with the staff, which is a standing group that includes figures from within the town government representing the different departments to sort of monitor the process of the project going forward. I've also initiated a kind of a different way of approaching this, a project like this, which is to, I would like to meet every principal in the whole system, K through eight principal, and we've already met with three of them. And we intend to meet with the remaining five before December. Visit the school, hear what their lessons learned are about their building and the way it supports or detracts from their educational program. But also hear them expound on their vision for the future of education here in town. So, we've done that. And then, also, we've started to meet with the key groups that are partners in the project. One of them is Parks and Recreation because in fact, this is a hybrid project that involves not only the construction of a school, but also the revitalization of a key recreational resource for the town. So, those two projects have been married into one and they, in essence, are a shared client for us. The future design inputs going forward, we understand that there's a product oversight committee which is being assembled. We believe that that's going to be our primary partner in working through the process, not only in terms of the design, but also in terms of starting to develop an approach to the community, gathering input from the community and obviously, the ideal would be to have consensus around the project. Of course, the school department and it's all of its various different key players. And then, the departments within the town that all have stake in the project and all have key roles in its development. Parks and Rec, Parks and Open Space, Recreation, Transportation, the Conservation Commission, Preservation Commission, the Building Department in terms of zoning, fire and police. So, one last word about where we are and where we're going. I need to manage expectations somewhat. So, this is the feasibility phase of the project. There is following on this, something which is called the schematic design phase of the project. Those are two different things. What we're doing is guiding ourselves through increasingly denser levels of detail. In the first phase of work that we concluded in October, we had the site selection. These are the kinds of drawings you saw for that, which are essentially looking at the overall shapes of sites and citing building volumes and footprints on them. Then, in this phase, as I showed you earlier, we're going to be looking at particularities of site plans and looking at configurations of academic space, services, utilities and so on. And these are the kinds of drawings that are going to be produced as part of this phase of the work. And then, to distinguish for you, you know, where that ends, schematic design will follow according to the schedule that we're now following in June, starting in June next year. And this is the kind of work that we do in schematic design, where we're getting into far more detail on the floor plans. We're starting to understand, not starting, but we will understand what the building will look like. People in the town will be very interested in that. And also, fully understanding the engineering of the building, its structural systems, its mechanical systems, its sustainability approach and so on. So, that concludes my update of where we are. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions?
So, did I understand correctly that you've met with the Transportation Department?
You met with the Transportation Department in the previous phase of work.
Oh, not...
The intensive part of that is going to be just this coming week and the following week. We have a meeting scheduled with the Transportation Board itself, I believe, a week from Wednesday. Oh, Monday, Monday, a week from Monday. We're meeting with, I'm sorry, Todd next week. It's actually quite closely coordinated because the study is underway right now. They're actually doing the measurements right now. So, as soon as that's been completed, we're going to bring the data directly to Todd immediately so that he can understand it. And then, we'll go before the Transportation Board. Now, it's not clear exactly what we're going to be presenting and the report is not going to be complete by that time. So, I think they just want to understand the process that I just described and also probably will want to tell us something about what they think the implications of putting a school in that location are.
Okay, thank you.
So, Philip and I attended a community meeting and presentation, the first real community input meeting on two traffic mitigation projects that have been underway for some time. The first, in response to a town meeting warrant from 2014. The second, something that came up through citizen input. And both of those projects that predate the choice of Baldwin for the ninth school were presented by Todd Corain at Beaver Country Day last night. The first project just addresses the intersection of Woodland and Hammond Street. And I didn't actually know that Woodland Road was on both sides of Hammond Street. I learned that last night. And I knew the part on the eastern side quite well. And that, I know that intersection quite well because I know Beaver Country Day School and it is a huge amount of asphalt there and it's a very complex intersection. And they went through, that has a traffic consultant, which some of the residents were confused why there were two different traffic consultants. So, Todd Corain didn't actually get into that because we didn't get into the ninth school study, but the fact is that JLA's traffic consultant was engaged for the site selection study, looking all the way across the town and it has nothing to do with the particular consultant who's two years into design work over there. They're both good traffic consultants, they're just two different ones. Anyway, that was very interesting and they had a whole series of increasingly intense proposals on how to fix the intersection. And the recommendation, as well as the embrace of the community, was to go with the one that involved the most work, which was to do something called road dieting. And which means that you make the asphalt smaller and the grass bigger and you tighten it down and that's very good for pedestrians and then they're going to put a traffic light.
And on the west side, though?
It's right in the middle of the intersection.
Oh, and, yeah.
They're going to turn that into a signalized intersection and neck it down everywhere. Woodland and Hammond, they're going to make it a much smaller intersection. They're going to investigate more in detail, but this was, had a lot of different medians and much smaller. And they were also, instead of Woodland, the in-way on Woodland coming up towards Sewell Recreation and Heath, instead of it being this sort of wide mouth where people can just go in at speed coming north on Hammond, they were going to put a great big amount of curb on the south edge of it so that you really had to slow way down and turn, make it less inviting because the problem is that there's more than 3,000 cut-through vehicles every morning that are heading east toward downtown trying to avoid Route Nine.
Why are we all looking at you? Because, um...
Yeah, coming from West Roxbury and Rosendale.
Two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, and then, what was also quite interesting was, a couple more things, I'll try to make this fast. It's two-way on the west side, one-way northeastbound on the east side. And Todd Corain wanted input from the residents about the traffic calming. Everybody agreed that they should put the speed tables, the speed bumps in, and also there's a new law that will allow the town with much less fanfare to, to, town meeting just has to vote and you can lower the speed limit on the east side to 25 instead of 30, which it's already posted 25 or vice versa. Anyway, make it all 25, those are the easy ones. And then, there was a really interesting discussion about whether to make the two-way part one-way, one-way both ways depending on the time of day, and then also whether you would flip the direction of the one-way part to reverse it to keep people from cutting through to Boston in the morning, but then, of course, they would cut through in the evening and, you know, anyway, and it was interesting because some people said, "Don't do that in front of my house." Then, the people that lived a couple of blocks away thought, "You can do it, it's a great idea to make it one-way, it's not in front of my house." And that was all, okay, well, we'll come back with more recommendations, but just our FYI is that people kept wanting to talk about the ninth school and Todd Corain kept saying, "That's on the 21st. You should, that will be the Transportation Board's first opportunity to learn about the ninth school project at Baldwin and that will be your opportunity for public comment. So, you should come and you should bring your friends and all come to the room 103 here, a week from Monday, to give your public input about the traffic impacts of the ninth school project on the neighborhood, as well as the rest of this Baldwin stuff. So, we need to be prepared."
So, part of the question is the role of this committee relative to building committees? Typically, when we form a building committee, we will delegate, under MSBA, we delegate a fair amount of authority to that committee. So, the devotion building committee actually has the, they decide, they make decisions. Whereas here, the building committee that we're going to put together is advisory to the Building Commission and to the school committee. So, the school committee is the using agency and the Building Commission is the fiduciary or whatever they are, project they're in charge. We each retain our votes at the end of the process. So, David, as our representative, is sort of representing our interests, but I would assume unless, I mean, we should talk about what role this committee wants to play, rather, the full committee, rather than things going to capital. Because, I mean, what David just said was super interesting, but it's also, I can imagine some people love that stuff, I mean, I'm interested in it, but other people might say that's the capital subcommittee's job. So, I think one thing that would be really helpful for David and me to understand is, at what points, and you might need to go back a couple of slides to the actual decisions or discussions, yeah, so some version of, yeah, some version of the milestones, you know, where people here want to weigh in, get updates, how frequently this work is due, and when is this done? This phase?
Town meeting, well...
Right, so town meeting's in May, but when's the deliverable of this report? It's got to be before May. April, okay.
So, let me make sure I understand. So, this detailed schedule that goes through April 27th, is it up to the feasibility?
The end of feasibility.
Complete feasibility?
That's the end of feasibility.
Up to feasibility before the schematics?
Right, to the end of feasibility before the beginning of schematic.
So, the conceptualization here was that the F-17 budget included the feasibility money, that was it. And Mary Allen is working with Melissa Goff to get the schematic design funding into the F-18 budget. So, we need to be able to make a presentation to town meeting that justifies the request to advance this project. And so, we need to complete feasibility and present it, be able to present it to town meeting along with the capital funding request to fund schematic design.
And the timetable for that, to be anywhere near on time, is that schematic phase has to start what, in June?
Well, so, you know, July, I mean, the monies technically aren't available until July 1, but in the past, every, having from my experience on the Building Commission, architects who feel as if they're not about to get fired just keep working and somehow manage to bridge from one funding source to another because time is of the essence and you kind of keep going. So, town meeting's in May and, you know, whether, then it's up to Ray Masick and the building, you know, sort of to, whether they can pay bills on...
Figure it out. Oh, sorry, Andrew.
And I just, I want to add to Susan's question for the committee to weigh in on. There are a couple of really big decisions that Jonathan and his team need in December around the educational plan and around the programming for the building. Is it a three-section school? Is it a four-section school? Is it a four-section school that opens as three sections and space for other townwide programs? Is it deep space? And so, there's, it's, I just add that to Susan's question because there are some really important things that the entire committee needs to weigh in on. And I think the question to the group is how to make that happen in the timeline that Jonathan needs.
Let me propose an answer, which is that we'd love a recommendation from the superintendent and with pros and cons.
Should that be synthesized initially by the curriculum subcommittee?
Well, it's both curriculum and it's capital planning.
Capital, it actually involves other, I mean, I keep on thinking that this sounds like maybe what we need is a workshop that focuses to, because trying to get at the level of detail with all of the pieces in a meeting like this with other things on the agenda, I think is going to be very, very difficult, and you don't want to have one, anyway, a workshop.
Dedicated evening.
Dedicated evening, afternoon, whatever it is, so that we can be, so that the architects have a hard deadline for that, we have all the pieces in place. You know, I mean, part of this is also, it's not just about curriculum and capital, it's also about where are our enrollment projections, and where are we on understanding sort of who's going to be in this building? Because all of that will affect whether or not we're talking about three or four, whether or not we're talking about special programming or beep or something like that. So I just, I think we ought to do a workshop.
I think, I mean, also, what I'm hearing is that the school committee wants to be in charge of these high-level programming decisions and not delegate them to the multi, to the building committee.
Yeah, I think we have to.
Well, I agree. So what we do need to, we do need to get this information both to the staff and architects so that they can proceed, but we also don't want to be tripping all over the building committee. So we've got to get our work done early so that the charges put out for execution.
Sorry, but we are the owner. And so in terms of what goes in there, I don't think it's the building committee that does that.
No, we do the program.
That's what, we need to do the program, both, you know, the educational program and what, and then from there, you know, once we've given direction, I think, you know, the school building committee can go forward.
Right, and we...
And we have to vote the education plan.
Yeah, we have to.
Right, that we do.
Well, it would be a good idea to do that. I mean, we don't have to, but...
Well, I think we kind of do. I mean, we can't, we can't just delegate to staff the right to create an education plan for a ninth school the first one, fifteen years, right? That feels like something...
It's a good, I agree with you.
Okay.
It's about it, so we don't need to argue it.
Oh, okay.
But we're not, but we're not going to write it.
No.
You're going to write it.
Well, it is well on its way.
Right, no, no, absolutely, right.
I'm sorry. It actually, a draft from, just to update everyone, an incredible amount of work has been done, both from senior leadership and through the work that Jonathan and Philip are doing, meeting with folks, to take what was the draft plan that was basically the devotion plan, and to a very in-depth, and I believe very strong, educational plan for a new, a new ninth school, which will be ready for curriculum subcommittee next Thursday.
So one of the things I actually said to, whispered here to Andrew, was that this is the first time, in my recollection, that we've gone to the curriculum coordinators first. And I think that's really good, and I'm really pleased about that. And I'm, because usually it sort of happens after the, later on, not at this stage. I mean, they are consulted, but not in the same way as, as what I understand or hear had happened. But I'm wondering if you have any suggestions for us of things that, sort of points where you think we need to weigh in on, or areas where you've seen that it's been helpful to you with other schools.
And again, you've got two, you've got two different clients here. The question is about this committee, not the building committee.
Well, we're looking forward to working with the, with the project oversight committee very closely.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of detail.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of detail, both in the programming side and in terms of weighing the alternatives for design. We had already toyed with, you know, several ideas about where formal approvals might be appropriate from this, from your body, and it's really not for me to say, but I can, I can make a suggestion. I think there needs to be a formal ratification of the work that, that the school department has done on the program, as you've just said. And I love the idea that you'd have a workshop so that you really could understand it, and not just rubber stamp it, so that, that makes a lot of sense. But I'd like to direct your attention to this schedule, because we're trying to get that in, at the beginning of December.
Those two weeks.
Yeah.
So there is going to be an opportunity for curriculum to weigh in next week.
Yes.
And so the question, our next meeting is December 1st, and so...
Yes, that's the date that we have there.
Right. Well, Thanksgiving is in between.
Yeah.
Literally, Thanksgiving.
So it's that workshop that needs to be scheduled, I think that's the challenge right now. And then the second portion would be, I believe the school committee, well, obviously, will need to formally approve the recommended alternative that comes out of the, out of the project oversight committee. I think the project oversight committee should deliberate, they should weigh the decision matrix, and then they should make a recommendation. And perhaps there's another workshop then for you to understand all the factors that contributed to the decision, the recommended decision.
Just to be clear, we just postponed until the first, the high school education plan, so we actually could turn the first into a ninth school, high school workshop, which might kind of be nice. They're going to be at different stages, this one's further along, but at any rate, we could kind of wrap our head around all of that and then take other business and find a different meeting for that. So that's another way to do it, to just stay on your schedule, Jonathan?
So I, I think that the, that this committee is probably quite jealous of the programming decision-making. And then the detailed execution and figuring out how to make it all work, it will be the building committee. But we want to understand and work with staff and you on the vision for what the program for the school is. And we need to do that quickly, we need to do that in this workshop. So there's, there's competing pressures to draw the workshop sooner, for many reasons, so that you can do your work. But what you need to do is figure out what you need to actually be able to bring to the workshop in order for it to be productive.
So I have a thought about that, a creative thought about that. Normally, we treat the programming phase as a very reductive project, where we're taking information, synthesizing it, and bringing it to a single dot. In order to empower you to really be involved, and because there's a variety along this, of approaches that I've, we've already heard, along the spectrum from reflecting the existing K through eight portfolio, to reel out their 21st century education, I thought that we would prepare three proposals that would be all along that spectrum, that you could review that night. And we would have diagrams like this one on the right to help you get right up to speed, to understand what that means in terms of configuration, to, just to give you a sense, just an early window into what we're talking about. We're hearing a lot about having collaborative spaces that are not traditional classrooms, spaces in between classrooms, or that classrooms are gathered around. And that can go anywhere from small breakout spaces to large learning commons. So, you know, that's, I think, those are key decisions that are going to have to be made, that are really going to determine the complexion of this new kind of school. So I thought we'd have three diagrams, just like that.
That sounds like a plan, that sounds great.
With three space summary.
But the same evening, we also need to come to terms with the enrollment issues and the, what, and the size of the school. And, I mean, basically, there's kind of two things that we've been talking about, which is, maybe the, maybe the easiest thing is, is to just affirm the notion that it's a three-section school. I'm not sure we're going in a different direction, but I'm seeing that maybe there's more to it, and so we have to, and then there's also the whole question of early education and how that gets programmed in. Because I do think we, to the extent that it's possible, we just want those things answered, we want those numbers. Like, this is what, this is what our core program is, our estimated number of sections and early education classrooms, and anything else that you think might belong on that site, bring it forward so that you guys can design to a, not a accordion program, but a fixed one.
So if I could go completely off-road and just brainstorm a little bit with you for just a moment, because I know we all have fixed ideas about how we should proceed with the size of the school. The size of the school is interactive with the site. That's interactive with design. It's not really a programming issue, it really has to do with fitting the building to the site. Because as far as I can determine, listening to everyone speak, we would like an 800-student school to address as far as we can the shortfall in student seats.
Not necessarily.
Well, if it, I mean...
So what are the, what is pushing back on that? It really has to do with the site, it has to do with the site constraints.
What's pushed back on it is the, is the, is the impact on how far the draw has to be, or what it does to walkable neighborhood schools, and the fact that we need to get to the demographics and understand what really our projections are for the next five and 10 years. But if it, if the maximum number of students that we're going to generate town-wide is absorbed by a full four-section school, then it, it means that we're sort of drawing, you know, the distortions in our, in our assignment districts become more intense the bigger the school is. And I think that's a...
I would add, using Jonathan's analogy of sort of going off-road, a consideration is if the site, as Jonathan described, you're sort of interacting with the site, if a four-section building fits well, there is a, there's an important discussion that needs to have, to happen among the staff, and then debated among the committee, does it make sense to build the space for four sections and consider some of our town-wide programming that may be in North Brookline, that could move to a site at the Baldwin School, that then frees up capacity in terms of space to add potentially a section in North Brookline. And that becomes very, again, very interactive with what, what are the possibilities, what would this, what could the space look like, what might make sense in terms of a move. So I think that's, that's another consideration, that in terms of the programming, it may make sense for it to be a four-section school, even if it programmed, was it three sections for general ed, there may be other things that help in the, in the portfolio of all schools with capacity throughout the town.
But in terms of design, that's a very different vision for what, what we, what the architects with JLA designs around, a four-section K through eight on the K through eight model, or essentially a three-section K to eight that has room for some of our substantially separate programming, is a different design, right? And so I, I just want to be sure that...
You do want a design for flexibility.
Well, ideally, it would be flexible enough to accommodate...
Right, right. I mean, ideally, it would, I just, I want to say that out loud, just in...
No, you're absolutely right. But that's, that's the charge to us, is to see if we can, so this is where...
Can I just say one thing on this, just before you move on?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Because I just think it's really important that, you know, that that decision be driven by educators. And what I mean by that is, I think there are a lot of people in town who think, "Oh, well, why don't we just put all of our substantially separate programs at Baldwin, and that would solve our problem?" And they're not saying it because they're bad people, they're saying it because they don't understand. They don't understand how our programs work, they don't understand the level of integration between our special education program, our district-wide programs, ELL, special education, and the mainstream curriculum. And so I think it's just important that, we all know that at this table, because we've been sitting here for a long time, but we have a lot of new people in town, and they just say things that sound really, really offensive until you understand that they just really don't understand. So I guess I would just say that to whatever extent we're pursuing this vision, it just be, in any conversations you're in, you too can help us with this, that, you know, just reminding people that that isn't, it's, it's not just a vessel that you fill, that there are actual pedagogical implications of moving programs, and, and you can't just, like, move them out, it's like the RISE program, you can't just move it, and then two years move it back. Like, it doesn't, it doesn't work like that. So, so just to the point, some of it might be space, but some of it is also how that decision gets made. And I don't want anybody, frankly, we on this committee aren't, we'll be making the decision, but we're going to be doing it, you know, based on a recommendation, and for sure the building committee isn't making a decision, right? So I just want to separate that one out, because I think it's a really easy one to trip up on.
And just for, for educators...
Just real quick, just want to clarify, as you said, sort of the, my vision, at this point, it's a question.
Okay, sorry.
There's not, there's not a vision, I think it's, it's just, it is a question that in the, in the initial stages of the process, you know, is, is one, you know, sort of, for the openness of the process, we should have all the questions out.
So I think a really, a really important piece for, you know, Jonathan, Phil, Ben, you guys, and Andrew, and Mary Ellen, all of you guys to, to be really, really clear about, because we're going to vote the building committee tonight. And then tomorrow, I'm going to send out an email introducing the committee to each other, and looking for a date to have an initial meeting, and then we're going to have an initial meeting. And at that initial meeting, what I would like you guys to bring is, the document that got sent out today, which is your work plan, is seeing it from your, your, you know, through your windshield or whatever, you know, from, from your window, which is great and essential. And I, but I talked to Ray on the phone today, and I asked him to develop a document that could be, it can be quite short, but that who, that essentially plays out the next five months from the building committee's standpoint that, because I would like, at their first organizational, our first organizational meeting, I would like to schedule all of the meetings for the building committee right through the end. They can change, we can add more, but I want to say, these are the meetings we're going to need, and this is what's going to happen at each of those meetings. It's just, and, and it's the arc of the, of the whole thing. You know, we're going to be at this point, then we're going to be at this point, this is your job at each one, this is what we're going to be bringing to you, this is what we're, more or less, what we're going to be asking for you, just to describe the whole arc for them. So we are not, so if we get the building committee together in a week or 10 days from now, or something like that, we're not going to know the answer to Andrew's question then. So we're not going to be able to tell them, and this is what goes into the building, run with it. So we need to, we need to choreograph that, what we are handing off to the building committee when we bring them together and say, these are, and give them important tasks to do that are coherent and they can have control over in the near term, and then tell them what isn't been, what hasn't been decided yet, what is still in process and will be delivered from the using agency, and when it'll be delivered.
In terms of process, so we, this was discussed at the regular staff meeting the other day, and I laid it out in very clear terms. We have three, in terms of the interaction of the size of the building with the site, we have three clear alternatives in terms of design methodology. We can study an 800-student school, we can study a 600-student school, or we can study both an 800 and a 600-student school. I, I don't like the last alternative, because it diffuses our attention and it prevents us from going deeper. And my recommendation to them was, I'm just preparing you for this, we don't need to take a decision now about it, but my recommendation is, let's look at the capacity of the site, let's look at the 800-student school, hold that possibility open, see what it looks like, and then we can pare back. In fact, the difference between an 800 and a 600-student school is mostly in the classroom academic spaces, it's really not in the core elements, the cafeteria shrinks a little bit, but the other elements, you know, there's, there's the same size gym, for example. So that's what I'm preparing you for. When we talk to the project oversight committee, we'll be, I'm sure that's one of the first things that we'll be talking about. But the question is whether it makes sense to just move forward, looking at the 800-student volume, and seeing how it fits on the site, and then we can start to test the interaction between that and your programmatic goals. So that, that's what, I'm trying to prepare you for that as a, as a likely design scenario. It wouldn't forestall the possibility that you could move to a 600-student, three-track school, but you'd, you'd be able to see what the full capacity of the site is to begin with.
So I, I was engrossed hearing, obviously, everything that's been talked about in terms of the visioning and the programming, and, you know, how that relates to your work. I mean, obviously, you're hearing what, what we're saying, but you have to actually make it happen. And it sounds like the number of potential permutation could be just mind-boggling, that it is hard for you to get to anything, as you said, take our attentions away, when you're working out too many options at the same time. And so if you could go back to the schedule that you just left...
This is the visioning and programming, this is...
This one, okay. So this happens after the visioning and programming.
Yes.
We're supposed to get done by early December.
Yes.
Okay, and what we're just talking about here, that's, I don't think that's going to be possible. Right, so the, the part I guess I'm focusing on is, okay, you deliver preliminary evaluation alternative design on, in January, then you have like six weeks span for additional evaluation. How does this part affect or impact the visioning, or the visioning at that point has been set?
Correct. That's the intent. But you can see here that we're, we're trying to deliver you alternative design strategies towards the end of December so that a preliminary evaluation can be done in, in the beginning of January, according to the schedule.
And just a note on 800, I mean, I think the target is four sections. You get to 800.
Wasn't quite 800.
Yeah, you get to 800 by, if my, my little finger calculator's right, 22 students on average per class, which is larger than our, what? No, four se, no beep, so four section, well, it doesn't matter, well, so 36 classrooms.
Seven fifty-six of 21.
Right.
Then you throw a couple beeps in there and you're close.
Are we adding, we're adding two beeps in? All right. Okay.
I mean, that's all part of the programming discussion.
It is, yes.
All right, good, till last now.
It's a programming discussion, it's also a discussion of in the long term, if, if we are right sizing Baker and building a new school and we're spending a lot of money in rental, is this the opportunity to start bringing beeps back into our school buildings, which is a good decision pedagogically and programmatically? And it, it financially is a very good decision, because it's no longer paying rent.
The only problem with it is, are we bringing them back in and promising that they're never going to? Since we spent a decade bringing them into the schools.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, I, I think that, to the extent that there's capacity, building, building to bring those programs back in, such that we have the space, such that if enrollment ends up being what we don't expect it to be, you, you can then make those decisions down the, it just, it feels really smart to me. So it, it feels like we should build what we can on the site. And I, yeah, just, I agree with those ideas.
It does seem, I mean, it seems as if we do, understanding that the physical impacts aren't that big, because the gym is the same size, it's a big footprint, et cetera. I think we do need to see the physical differences between the larger and smaller and what the, what the relative impacts are in terms of number of floors, the children going up and downstairs, proximity to, you know, how much outdoor, you know, place space there are for the different programs, whether this has a material difference in terms of the usability of the school and of the, and of the site plan. And I think having some amount of that feedback to inform the programming decision-making would be helpful. But again, it's, it, the, the, the timing logistics are complicated.
Let me think of how to do that, David, and, and you're, you of all people would know the best what we're going through. Because the difference between six tracks and eight tracks could mean the difference between a triangle and a square. I mean, you, you know, it, it, it actually could be at the core of the shape and the, the, the soul of the, of the design proposal. It might be, it might be something more than just lopping off the end of a wing, you see what I'm saying?
Right, no, if it was three sections, it might be a triangular building with three pods or four pods, yeah, right, very different.
So, I, I, this was my plea to the staff meeting the other day, because we've been through this on other projects, where we go through multiple, multiple iterations and it just waters down the ability to make a great building, because we're, we're having to make iterate, so.
Right, so, so, so I would like to, I would like to have.
I prefer to have a single charge and then show you three 800 student buildings and really drill into those three buildings, make them as different as possible from one another, rather than doing six versions that are just about size.
So what we, what we need to do, and Mary Ellen, I'm looking at you, what we need, what we need to do is get to our enrollment projection meeting, at least. I don't think we can responsibly really even have this conversation about the capacity of the school without getting through the iteration of the, of the enrollment projection report, long, short-term and long-term. Right, and that'll help.
Sorry if I was out of the room and you discussed this, but are we operating with absolutely no flexibility other than what we already got from Parks and Rec and the use of land on the site? That is to say, Sewell, the pre-K building is off the table, the gym is off the table, everything is off the table except for that one thing through the parking lot, is that right?
No, we had a very, very, I think I'm at liberty to share with you, we had a very productive meeting with them. And it was very collaborative and everything was discussed. Including the, the size of the parking area. It, it was a very positive meeting in the sense that they told us what they were really trying to achieve. They weren't being prescriptive in, in, in terms of how to do it, they were telling us what they're trying, they're trying to make a better Sewell. That's what they're trying to do. They're not trying to protect a, a concrete block gymnasium or, you know, the, initially, we thought that that's what they had in mind. They were going to put circles around things and say, don't touch that, but that's not what they had in mind at all.
So when you're doing.
In that preliminary discussion.
So when you're doing in designs, you're also incorporating possibly ideas for using that, right?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to hear, thank you.
It was very collaborative.
Very glad to hear that, thanks.
Yeah, and there was a lot more flexibility than I initially thought.
Is there thoughts also about shared spaces?
Yes, I think they understand that this is going to be a joint facility.
On both sides, on both sides.
Both ways, yeah, yeah, so we talked about maybe replacing, you know, or, I'm sorry? Not quite shared, Mary Ellen has the right language for you. Mary Ellen was at the meeting too, she could probably better report.
I think with the success of the meeting was bringing in both Erin Gallantyne and Lisa Paredest with Jonathan Levy and Phil Gray and having them explain the Sewell project that was removed from the CIP and now being incorporated into this, to the Baldwin project. And making sure that what they were looking for repairs and upgrades to the fields and facilities there. And I think the, I think the big aha was getting the information to both of them that this is not an MSBA project and that they could think creatively about the old gym, they could think creatively about the environmental classroom and think creatively about a partnership between the Sewell property and the Baldwin property, because there aren't going to be these overarching restrictions where there is disappointment at the end, which has kind of been the experience. I think that really has opened up some of their thinking and then we have made sure that they, both of them are included and invited to the working group every Wednesday so that we can keep both of them informed and updated and participating in the creative, some of the creative thinking process, really the task process, and also keeping the Park and Rec Commission up to date and informed as well. So I think that was kind of the major shift in the opening of minds, because they thought, they were still under the impression or thought, because they hadn't heard, because they're in a different, they're in a different sphere than we are, that the MSBA isn't going to have, be, be a factor. So, you know, there's some history between the school department and recreation that I and myself and Matt are working with Lisa and Melissa Baptiste on repairing and clarifying that, so I'm very cautious about us being overly prescriptive that it'll be shared space, because to them, they feel that that is, that they are losing space. And that's really not our intent, we need to be respectful, they need a gym 20, you know, all day, every day. So we'll be talking more about that and forming those agreements and probably doing something more formal than has been done in the past. So that's just, is a staff update.
So one thing, I mean, I know this isn't directly about this, but I think we need to make sure whenever we do a project because it has been that they haven't been always at the table and I would like to make sure that, we need them for any of our projects. Even if it's one that seems landlocked, they still have some say, or some need to either interface with us, clean it, take care of it, maintain it, and I think that that has been one thing that we have not been so good about.
And also, just to extend, we're, we're going to be taking the same approach with the high school, because there's also a companion high school parks project in the CIP that may also need to come off and be incorporated in the high school project to fit the high school project in the CIP. And so that would be the same kind of approach in making sure that both of them are included in the preliminary planning discussions, just so that they're up to speed and, and can be part of the creative process. And so we have invited the two of them to our, Ray, Ray and I are having a meeting with Pip Lewis and HMFH to sort of figure out our, our kickoff meeting, and we've included the two of them to that meeting as well, because Pip Lewis has conveyed to Ray that he has some feedback in terms of the education plan that's important for Erin and Lisa to hear, along with myself representing the school department, as a kind of a preliminary report. So we're, we're making sure that we have that outreach for the high school as well.
Well, just an FYI, the high school quad, that was on the CIP since the time that we renovated the high school the last time.
I'm not sure that's the one that's coming off.
That's not the one, okay, well, anyways, but that's been there.
No, I'm hearing, go ahead.
Oh, so sometime in that evening is, the 21st is the Transportation Board hearing. I'm wondering, just getting, cutting to the chase in terms of the building committee that's going to be organized, if we might target immediately before that meeting for an organizational meeting for the Baldwin School Building Committee? And then invite the committee to also sit in and hear about the site at the Transportation Board, is that? I mean, it's, it's hard to imagine people could actually, no, that's too much work? Well, don't we want them to hear it? We don't, we want to protect them from it? Yeah, well, yeah, right, right, okay, well, I was thinking that, I was thinking Monday, Monday or Tuesday, the 21st or 22nd, did you want to see the, did you want to get the committee together before Thanksgiving? Okay, so. Well, so the morning, do you want to do it after?
This is a building committee, can I, can I make table this, because that's not relevant to anyone here except you. Is that okay? Unless you really want to do it now.
Well, I'm going to send out an email tomorrow to try to get the timing organized, so I'd love to get some feedback from Mary Ellen and you guys and Andrew about what, whether, if we're going to do this, when, when we do it, because then I can, then I can at least just send it out. So I can email you guys first tomorrow and, okay.
Okay, so I think that what we decided for this committee was that December 1st, we would attempt to use a significant portion of our agenda on this, if that's okay with you. This will also workshop-style and this will also be on the agenda for the curriculum subcommittee next Thursday, if anybody wants to attend. It would be very nice to not repeat things, so if you want to hear about the ed plan pieces, hopefully, we can make progress in curriculum and then move it forward on December 1st, not rehash. Is that okay? Okay, so now, thank you very much, do you need anything else from us, Jonathan, Phil? Do you two need anything else from us? Or are you? I mean, it's on the Ninth Education Plan.
I don't think so.
All right, great, so now.
I don't think we need to, I mean, we also have, we also have Capital Subcommittee, but that's like one too many, I mean, with the building committee, I'm not sure when Capital Subcommittee is going to be demanding that you guys show up at our door to inform us. It'll be more like, will be between me serving on the building committee, other members of Capital Subcommittee can drop in on the building committee meetings if they want, and then, then reporting to Full School Committee probably would be enough.
Thank you all.
Good, all right, thank you so much. We have three other, three other things to vote. One is the building permit application, demolition certificate application, do you want to?
Right, so this is a request. So this is a request for the school committee to authorize and approve the Baldwin School Building Permit Application and the Preservation Commission Application for a demolition certificate. As you probably remember from the Devotion Project, this begins the 18-month waiting period, so that no, the restriction where no work will be done for 18 months. It doesn't mean that demolition has to happen in 18 months, it can be delayed a period, but given the ambitious timeline for this project, it's important, and my recommendation that the committee votes to approve this and then sign it as a committee.
All right.
I move it.
All right, excellent, moved by Ms. Charlefsky, seconded by Dr. Jackson, any discussion? We're all clear, this is not, doesn't bind us to do anything, it's getting, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, thank you. Do we have a signature page, it just says signature page attached? Is there one that has a signature?
Yes, I have it, sorry.
Okay, David has it, all right, excellent, two of them, all right, so make sure.
The building permit application, which you have to file before you can file to the demolition permit.
We can sign them both at the same time.
We can sign them both at the same time. Do we need a separate vote, or is that, that vote covered both of them?
Yes.
Okay, that vote covered both of them, so we just need to be clear on that. All right, so then we have the Ninth School Building Committee. Do you want to, we've, we have already discussed this as a, as a group, but it has changed just a little bit.
Right, so the memorandum, which was distributed to you, has been slightly revised, it's actually been revised several times, but at this point, it's just clearly an advisory committee, it's an advisory committee to, to all three boards. The, the membership was adjusted. It has, unlike the way it was presented by Joe Connolly and the group that developed it back in May, it now has two parent reps and two community reps instead of one of each, and it has one building department rep instead of two. Those are the adjustments for the Ninth School Building Committee. And then it is, as I said, advisory, because the fiduciary responsibility rests by town bylaw with the building commission. And in terms of its purview, the last of the four bullet points reads, "The building committee shall be concerned with all aspects of, concerned with all aspects of the project, including budget, schedule, safety, public relations, coordination of town agencies, logistics, and contract compliance." So it's meant to enable the, the committee to take up whatever considerations it, it and the public feel are important on the project, but to then just simply report back and advise us and the other two boards. So I would move that this, this committee document and charge, I don't know exactly what we call it, committee charge, structure and charge, to the school committee.
All right, there's a motion for a second, all right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Excellent, it's unanimous. And just to let you all know, for the Parks and Rec, the, the selectmen appointed Clara Bachelor.
Who was actually first appointed by the Parks and Rec Board to be their representative and then the selectmen. The selectmen voted a whole slate with the, except that the school parents haven't, the parent representatives haven't been finalized.
The, and I think you all know that Nancy Daly is the co-chair, that Janet Feirman is the co-chair from the Building Commission, and I think the school principal representative.
E.C. Sevelius.
E.C. Sevelius.
Our parent reps are close, but not quite there yet, so.
And the two community reps have been voted by the board of selectmen last night.
Blair Hines and Steve Brooks.
Blair Hines is, I believe, lives around the corner, he's a landscape, long, he's a landscape architect who has a practice in Coolidge Corner, a longtime resident. Steve Brooks.
Lives on Carrier Road, which is right, pretty much across the street. Carrier Road's the tiny little road just north of the property before Route 9.
Blair Hines is also a twofer, he's on the planning board. So Blair Hines is a. Blair Hines is a neighbor, a landscape architect, and, and serves on our, and is on our planning board.
So I think that's great, and I, I think that's great, you know, to get people who are sort of in the field in addition to being, to have a twofer like that.
Comes from MSBA to get design professionals.
Yeah, no, but, but the fact that we're doing it, right, and the parents would be great if, contractor, engineer, having that sort of background would be helpful in when you're looking for people.
in when you're looking for people.
Okay.
So, we can vote the, such as we have the slate, we can vote those people so that I can contact them?
Well, we are designating-
Well, I thought we were gonna just vote this, we're just voting-
Oh, the slate will be ratified. Yeah, I mean, we can vote the people we have, we're still missing two people, but yes.
So, moved.
All right. Well, we're not meeting until December first, so I think the point was to get moving. Um, so, it's been moved, second? Sorry, I'm a little confused. No, okay.
So, we got, I mean, it includes Mel and, uh, Dan Bennett, the building commissioner, and it, it's the, most of the people are given by their titles on this list that we just voted.
Uh, building commissioner or designate.
So, it's A.C. Sebelius, the, the two community reps that we just spoke about, the three chairs. It's pretty much just affirming that these people are gonna be on the committee, 'cause the committee reports to us.
So, it's, they've, and they can't meet until we ratify them, is that the point?
Well, I could, I could bring them together.
Means the advisory committee, they could show up, but-
Yeah, and the Board of Selectmen has already, well, the Board of Selectmen hasn't voted the parent reps either. It's a little hard to wait another week to organize when the-
I would, I would recommend similar, similar to MSBA process, where if there's a vacancy when it's then filled, that, that person is voted. So, I would recommend voting the slate that we have and then, um, filling in, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we are going to, so that's what David's motion was, I think, which was to vote the slate we have and with two vacancies. Second, Dr. Jackson, um, any further discussion? We're all clear, okay, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Um, the last item for tonight, um, in our regular agenda is the high school expansion project, it's on the other side of your page. It's on the back of your, the only small edit is, um, there's just a bit of a typo on the second to last sentence. It says, "The school committee working with superintendent staff shall provide candidates to fulfill the two school parent community positions." And I would just amend that to say that the superintendent, working with the headmaster, will provide candidates and including the dean role and the student rep, because the dean role and the student rep are not mentioned up here.
But they're in, those are the ones that are in the list right below.
Right, they're in the list below, but they're just, it's just a bit of a typo, they're not in the opening paragraph, so I would amend that, and then, um, move this, just the charge and structure, it's pretty much the same thing with the exception that there's a dean and a student rep.
So, we're not doing the slate tonight, just the structure?
Right, we can give you the update on the slate, but we're just doing the structure tonight.
The selectmen didn't vote on the slate for this yet.
Right. So, I'll move the structure and charge, second, Mr. Pollak, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Yeah.
All right, so the structure and charge are approved. Um, just so you know, the member of the, the, the co-chairs are Nancy Heller and George Cole. Um, the Parks and Rec Commission member, I believe, um, has not been announced yet, as far as I know. But it might be, it will be announced next week, is my understanding, um, unless somebody has other information. And then, the headmaster is the headmaster, the dean that, um, has been identified. Janay Ramos, and the student representative has not been identified, so that's kind of where we are on filling the slots. Um, and there are two parents who, oh, two parent reps, um, who are identified. Ian Rothman, who's an attorney, town meeting member, um, parent at the high school, uh, chair of the F Board, and, um, Jordan Moranis, who's a K-eight, um, student, um, who's a veteran of the Strategic Plan Committee, um, and, um, and is a Heath parent. So, we have North Brookline, South Brookline, we have K-eight, um, high school, uh, we have a-
I'm sorry, who did you say the parents were, I didn't hear?
Ian Rothman-
Oh, okay.
And Jordan Moranis. So, we have North-South High School, K-eight. Okay, any other thoughts, questions? All right, and so we will, so if, can you just touch base with anything about the student rep? I don't know how they wanna, presumably, we should let them have a voice in whom they want to appoint to this.
I would suggest that it not be our student rep, because it's a lot of work, and that, nobody can do that much.
It is.
They won't be effective, so it's, it's, and it's a good thing to give other kids an opportunity, so that would be my only suggestion. Yeah, yeah.
So, let them pick their rep. Um, all right, great. Good, and then the two, uh, people representing the interest of the greater high school community, uh, one has been identified but not named by the selectmen, so I won't mention it here yet, and one has not been yet, so they're still in process. Okay, that's where we are, we're gonna keep moving along. So, we still have need for an executive session?
Wait, can I?
Oh, yes, sorry.
News.
What?
New business.
New business?
Just real quickly, 'cause I didn't get to put it in liaison, 'cause I didn't wanna stop some- Just good news, and we can end the night with good news. So, I was at the edco meeting this morning, we voted to, over two years, reduce our assessment by fifty percent, and so for next year, and I'm gonna give this to you, Mary Ellen, it's nineteen thousand instead of thirty-three thousand, half a teacher, whatever, we have a little more money, and then the following year, it'll be sixteen-five-ten.
All righty.
Whatever.
Wonderful.
Anyways, just want to end with good news.
Wonderful, incredibly exciting, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, all right, anything else, any other new business? All right, then we will adjourn, uh, to, I mean, not adjourn, um, we have need for an executive session. All right, so we have need for an executive session for the purposes of, um, collective bargaining with Brooklyn Educators Union, U.S.AAB, and Parent Professionals, AFME, uh, Brooklyn Educational Secretaries Association, um, uh, AFME Local thirteen fifty-eight, School Food Service Employees, AFME Council ninety-three, AFL-CIO Building Service Employees. Ms. Quinn, we will poll the committee.